Okay, I'm calling the joint session of the Town Council and the Hospital District Board. The order will start with roll call for the town.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Romack?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Polovy?
Here.
Vice Mayor Klobstad?
Here.
And I already did Mayor Spersky.
Here.
You're here.
And now for the hospital.
Director Brown?
Here.
Director Chamblin?
Here.
Director Wong?
Here.
Chair McGary?
Here.
And I'll note Dr. Darzinkovich as absent this evening.
Thank you. Would you now all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is an unusual session. I think it's the first time the Town Council and the Hospital Board have held a joint meeting. So just briefly, I want to describe how we plan to proceed this evening. Also, we want to acknowledge that we have Dan Wilkins sitting in for Jen Callaway. He'll be our Assistant Town Manager for the evening, handling things for the town staff. And then Anna Roth, the head of the Hospital District, CEO, is with us. And Anna, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to say about this historic moment or not?
Thank you for having us, and we're delighted to be able to work in partnership with the town tonight. Thank you.
Okay, great, great. And so for this process, what we're planning to do is first we'll have general public comments, which means it's an opportunity for anyone to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda tonight. And there's only one item on the agenda tonight. It has many parts, but the item concerns a proposed navigation center for the homeless out at 12315 Deerfield Drive. Once we finish the general public comments, what we'll do is we'll come back, we'll open that item with presentations by staff. And our Police Chief, Danny Remfro, will lead the staff discussion. Sitting next to him is Ted Owens, representing the hospital, who is going to help him out. And they're going to call on several speakers to make a presentation to all of us. Following that presentation, both the council and the board sitting up here, the directors of the Hospital Board, and the members of the Town Council will have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions. And I anticipate just going down the row for questions. And since there's eight of us, and actually, yes, there's eight of us with Vice Mayor Anna appearing remotely, those questions may take a little while. Following that will be an opportunity for public comment. People making public comments will need to come up to the podium, make sure the little green light is on the mic, so we can all hear you, and the people watching from home can also hear you. You will have three minutes. You should direct your comments up here to those of us sitting here on the dais. There's a clock over here, so you can tell how much time you have left. Following all the public comments that come in, we up here on the dais will then have an opportunity to do further questioning based on those public comments. Following that, we will go into deliberation, and it's going to be a joint deliberation. As I said, this is a historic occasion, the first time we've ever tried to do this, at least in my term here. And so there might be a few bumps, but we'll just work our way through it in a collegial manner. And then following the deliberations, we will then separately vote on our items. There's nine items for the Town Council to vote on, and only one item for the hospital to vote on, but that's the money item. So it's still a big deal for both the Board of Directors at the hospital and the council for the town. Okay, after all that speech of fine, I'm going to turn it over to Dan, or excuse me, Danny, our Police Chief for the town.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Town Council and Board of Tahoe Forest. This is great to have everybody here. And I want to thank everybody who's here from the community, who's obviously have been invested in this and has seen us work through a lot of what we're going to present tonight. So thank you for being here and being engaged. Just a brief overview of how the presentation's going to go tonight. We're going to have Shawna Doherty, our TAC Coordinator. She's the one that's going to go over basically overview of the process and the community outreach, the model and the site. Land use and funding for the town is going to be myself. And then the Navigation Center Operator, Volunteers of America, Travis Sandifer, will be here to present as well. And then we'll have an opportunity for county perspectives or partner perspectives from our TAC partners from the county and from Tahoe Forest as well. And then we'll provide the recommendations, staff recommendations, for the council to review on the town's behalf. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started. And I'll turn this over to Shawna Doherty, our TAC Coordinator.
Thanks, Danny. Good evening, Town Council and Directors of Tahoe Forest Hospital District. My name is Shawna Doherty, and I have the honor of serving the Coalition as the Coalition Chair. Before you, I think many of you know this already, there's 11 members who have come together to move this work forward, and we have three co-chairs. Go to the next slide. The first order of business for the Tahoe Truckee Homeless Action Coalition, and in its first phases, there were two phases, as you remember. The first phase was focused on planning. We did that for 18 months, and the result was the action plan that you've all reviewed and approved. And our next phase that we're in, we relabeled ourselves to reflect the action. And the second phase of work is the Tahoe Truckee Homeless Action Coalition. Many of the same members are involved, and we're focused on action. On the screen before you are the four focus areas of the action plan. We are focused on all four of those, but tonight we're really going to focus on number one, which is the crisis stabilization. But I always like to zoom back out, because tonight we're really going to be focused on talking about the navigation center. But this collective work is about a broad spectrum of goals. Next slide. An important framing for tonight's conversation is also to reference the action plan framework that we use a lot in thinking about how we create different doorways to meet the unhoused population where they are. To the far right, it's a little hard to see on the screen, but is the affordable housing. In the center is the permanent supportive housing. And then on the far left is the navigation center and interim housing. Along the bottom are the services and funding for rapid rehousing. So to truly create an ecosystem of serving our community and our unhoused community, what we're doing tonight is talking about the gap on the far-left side, which doesn't exist today. Next slide. So my job for tonight is just to refresh the memory of how long this journey has been to get to tonight. Also, to remind everybody that we have had a lot of community outreach. The Town Council has had quite a few updates. I know the Hospital Board has had a lot of updates. So I'm trying to pull out just some key points for you as decision-makers to remember all of those updates that you've seen, and know that tonight is a result of that collection of all of that community feedback and the discussion that went back and forth at all of the TAC meetings. Next slide. We do have attached in the staff report a summary of the decisions that were made throughout the last several months at TAC, kind of line by line, so you can see how we ended up at this place tonight. We also have included in the packet 120-day specific community engagement plan related to the navigation center. We are committed to continuing with the community outreach related to all of the actions moving forward in the plan. Next slide. Last night, hot off the press, those are photos from the meeting last night. We did our first, if you can go back one, we did our first neighborhood meeting, and we had about 25 people there and two-hour conversation. And it was a great launch to the continuation of those conversations. So I'm going to get into, so that's the section on sort of process and the building blocks that led to tonight's model that we're asking for investment. A little bit of a reminder about the navigation center model, and Travis with VOA is going to come up here and talk, kind of take you through a virtual walking tour of the actual center and how it works. But key things to remember about the navigation center model is that it's heavily service-focused, and it's very, very tailored to individuals. And we're going to hear more about that. But really, what you're trying to do is stabilize people, help them with services based on what their needs are, and then move them towards a permanent situation. One thing I'd like to add is that we've had a lot of comments about, isn't this similar to what we've had before? And the key with this navigation center is that it's open year-round. So we've had a weather-triggered warming shelter before, but it was just in the winter, and people were released in the morning. And this model is to really deepen the stabilization by providing services year-round, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And that model is proven throughout the country to be quite effective for helping people move forward. For those who have been tracking this conversation, we threw this slide in, because there's been a lot of conversations about Model A and Model B, back to A, then to B. And where we ended, I'm not going to go through the details of that, but just to remind you of that conversation, that A was the scaled-down navigation center that was really going to be focused on just interim beds. We went back to the drawing board, talked with our partners, talked about what everybody needs and really wants this success to be. And at the end of the day, everyone wanted to bring those shelter beds back in. So as a reminder, we're back to Model B with the additional extension of not having the shelter only at winter, but now we're talking about 365, 24/7, 16 beds, six of them being interim, and 10 of them being shelter beds. So that's where we're landing tonight. Next slide. This is again another one of those reminders. So we don't just collect the feedback from the community and then move on. We collect the feedback and we use it as a reference, and we go back to it. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the site, but we wanted to pull this slide up, because this is a high-level summary of the feedback that we collected at the town-sponsored April 3 meeting, where we had a station focused on the navigation center, as you remember. And one of the key questions we asked is, what do you think is a good criteria to use for citing a navigation center? And things that we heard, and again, we've gone back to that in looking at this proposed site, is walkable, close to services, that the services would be housing-first focused, and that it would be year-round. So again, I'm just demonstrating that we take that feedback, we go out, do the work, and then we check back with that input. Next slide. So as far as looking at sites, Cindy Bosso and Kathy were very involved with this, and Jasmine. In 2023, I added this little bullet, we have been looking for sites for some type of interim housing, warming center, something to fill the gap since 2023. Cindy said that she worked with a realtor and went to 40 different sites in the corridor and beyond that to try to find a suitable site. The overarching thing we were looking for was, you know, centrally located, possibly walkable, and then something that was available, because the number-one thing that the TAC recommended was that we get something up this winter. That was a really critical piece. So these are just examples of the type of updates that we kept getting from the team that was going out and looking at the sites, and then coming back and reporting back to us, kind of where they were looking. Based on the criteria that we heard from the community meetings throughout the year, and then the goal of opening this winter, we landed on the site at Deerfield. So you can go to the next slide. So the site at Deerfield, that's the site right there, is behind the Taco Bell. I think everyone's kind of familiar with that. We're talking about renting half the space. It's about 3,000 square feet, and it would accommodate all of the services I mentioned before. Nevada County is in the process of negotiating, having conversations about being the leaseholder for that. And Danny's going to talk a little bit about the land he's planning part tonight. So these are just a couple of slides for those that aren't familiar with this site. So at that point, I'm going to hand it over to Danny, who's going to talk about the land he's planning and the funding side.
Yeah, thank you, Shawna. I appreciate that. So yeah, really accelerating the land use for this winter services. So zoning restrictions, this particular property is currently cited. Zone, highway, commercial, emergency shelters, and planning, which would require a planning commission approval with permits. And transitional housing would not be allowed under its current zoning. Planning Commission, some Planning Commission updates. The Planning Commission has recommended zoning amendments for the shelter to be used by right, which won't take effect until 2025, but that'll be presented for council consideration, I believe, in November. Nevada County would invoke the California Government Code Sections 53090, 53091, superseding Town Code to expedite the approval. So what that does is that gives us a gap for these first few months. If council approves the zoning change that the Planning Commission will bring forward, then this type of use would be allowed for that property. For the county to invoke this code gives TAC the ability to have a few months ahead of time in order to work to get this facility up and ready for January 1, ideally. Council Resolution waiver that the Town Council adopts Resolution 2025-67 to waive the 60-day state notification. So that's also removing some timing barriers, so we can get working on this location. And then the pilot activation, legal pathways combined to ensure compliant and timely activation for emergency shelter pilot. So some of the tenant improvements here, the TIs that we would have to do in order to make this a feasible location, is approximately $65,000, which would include a shower installation, some kitchen upgrades. Building permits would require 20 days after a completed application. Tenant improvements expected to finish within the following 30 days after the permit is issued. And town staff recommend expediting permits, if possible, to meet the January 2026 opening target. Expedited process is critical to avoid delays to ensure a timeline adherence for that January 1 opening date, target date. So the funding strategy here is unlocking the $1.4 million to pay for this pilot. Partner agencies, contributors here, the town of Truckee, the funding request would be for $360,000 through Nevada County as well, 75 through Placer and Tahoe Forest, $360,000 as well. Philanthropic gold would be $230,000. And we're already starting to get some traction based on feedback that we're getting with getting some of those funds donated towards this project. So sustainability is a big question, I think, we all have, is how is this project going to self-sustain after this one-year pilot? And this is a one-year ask. And so it's really going to be incumbent upon TAC to really focus on a longer-term funding strategy. So this will be really able to get us off the ground and get it started. And then the work is going to begin to start looking for a longer-term funding strategy. And just of note, I know that, I think it was mentioned before, Pacific Crest Commons will be set to open mid-2026, adding 55 affordable and supportive housing units alongside this navigation center, if approved. I already talked about the sustainable funding strategies moving forward. And yes, that'll allow time to get public funds and grants in place for next steps in the following years, if this is successful. Next, I'd like to invite up Volunteers of America, Travis Sandifer, and he can talk about the program.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Travis Sandifer, Volunteers of America, Regional Vice President. I'm based down the hill out of Reno, Nevada. This has been an extraordinary process. I've been in communication with the TAC folks for a couple of years now, and watching that process is amazing. And part of that is you are all sitting in the room together and discussing this. I've watched many communities that have either simply given up, or they've stopped talking to each other. And so this is really extraordinary. And I'm excited to have the opportunity to share a little bit more about the specifics of what this navigation center could look like if you choose to move ahead, and if Volunteers of America has chosen to move ahead with that. We can move to the next slide. Quick history lesson. I know not everybody loves history as much as I do, but I want to share a little bit about who we are. VOA has been around for over 100 years. We've been in this region since 1911. Our current focus, throughout history, we've always been looking to help communities be thriving and healthy. But right now, we're facing the crisis of a generation around homelessness and housing. And so much of the work that we do is focused on those spaces. And so our goal is to move people from homelessness to housing with dignity and love along the way. We have the benefit of being a national organization, but with local affiliates. So we have a local Board of Directors, a local 501(c)(3) with a local leadership team that can respond to an individual community's needs versus that of a national organization. But we talk to our colleagues across the country so that we know what's happening in other communities. Next slide. The scope of the challenge is on a whole nother level. I oftentimes tell people, and forgive me, because I know this is repetition for some of you, this is not my father's era of homelessness. You see those numbers, you see the scope of what we are facing. And the truth is that housing, as many of you know, especially with the healthcare folks in the room, housing impacts health. And so a paper by the National Bureau of Economic Research that I will hit you with probably every week, and I remind our team of frequently, if you are unhoused, you are three and a half times more likely to die. It takes 20 years off your life. And so if you just add 20 years to your age right now, it's a sobering thought of what that looks like. But to give you a taste of what housing, navigation services, case management can do with care coordination combined, we have a pilot program down the hill in Reno. It's in partnership with Anthem. We pair interim housing with case management and care coordination. I was able to pry the data out of them finely. 89% reduction in ER visits, 91% reduction in inpatient hospitalization. And I can't describe to you, because I've watched some of these individuals with the eyeball test, and you meet them at the beginning, and you see them a year later, and they're totally different human beings. And it's very hard to measure that and to put a number to that, but I want to remind you of that. And I see that day in and day out. We also are seeing a different face to homelessness in our navigation centers. I assume, as I've looked at your point-in-time count, as I've looked at that needs assessment, the population is aging. Down the hill, we are seeing at least half of our individuals are now seniors. That requires a different approach, requires a different mindset, as we are looking for solutions and pathways on the other side. Next slide. VOA has a full service continuum, from street outreach to housing to behavioral health. And I just share this to give you a snapshot of our expertise in various communities and the breadth of communities that we are in. And the communities where we tend to succeed are the ones where all of the entities come together, and we're all in this together and looking for solutions together. Next slide. One example, down the hill, we have a 549-bed shelter, the Nevada Cares Campus. We integrate case management with Washoe County. They have behavioral health technicians on site. There are nurses on site. There is a federally qualified healthcare center, Hopes, right there on the edge of the campus. It's one of the most known campuses in the region, and we've been able to learn and see a lot through that experience. Next slide. We also have experience in smaller shelters in other communities. We have the X Street Navigation Centers down the hill, down in Sacramento, El Dorado County. We can adapt. There is not a one-size-fits-all. Our preferred approach is to sit down and hear from the community what works, what doesn't work, and we come at those solutions together. As a part of that, we would always recommend to a community that we would come in with what I would call good neighbor policies. We certainly heard that and those concerns last night. And so some of our recommendations at a minimum would be to institute a curfew, so that you don't have people coming and going at all hours of the night, or congregating around the outside for the good of that community. Noise policies, and again, this navigation center would be staffed 24/7 by staff to make sure that these policies are followed. And making sure security is paramount. The health and safety of staff and participants on the site is always our primary concern. Under no circumstances do we allow drugs, alcohol, or weapons on site. We would certainly coordinate closely with law enforcement and others on the follow-up thereof. But we do bag checks as individuals come into the navigation center. And then, of course, community coordination. One of the things that we would certainly do with the neighborhoods surrounding, make sure that they have the contact details for the shelter supervisor. If they're having challenges or issues, that can be a primary point of contact. They can certainly work with other local entities for doing outreach, going and dealing with issues, whether that be trash, whether that be encampments, bus stop issues, and then we can certainly coordinate with local law enforcement as well. Next slide. To give you, and let me give you, kind of like Shawna was saying, I'll give you kind of a virtual imaginary tour. So let's imagine somebody's unhoused, they come up to this particular facility, which by the way, far exceeded my expectations and that of a couple of our shelter directors that we brought to walk the site and look at it. So you walk up, you would have a security-controlled primary point of entry. So you only want one in and out, so that we can kind of make sure that we know who's on site, who's coming and going. They would come in, we would have this foyer where we would do a bag check. We want to make sure that no weapons, drugs, or alcohol are ever coming inside the facility. They would talk to our team, who would do what we call a diversion and intake questionnaire, can take between 15 and 30 minutes. And a big part of this is gathering that critical data about the individuals that we're serving. We also want to know where they're coming from, why they might be unhoused, to start to look at some of those things for when they meet with their case manager. The diversion piece is also critical. We don't want people to end up in the shelter if they have a safe or alternative place to go. And you would be surprised at how many people we run across who come in, and maybe they actually have a stable home somewhere else, and they just need a bus ticket, but we need to verify that that actually is a safe place. We talk to those individuals, there's questioning, there's a lot of legwork that goes into that. But we certainly try to divert people where appropriate. So you've come in, you've been assigned to a bed. We would lay out the expectations, those are the policies and procedures, the rules of a site. We have to keep that site appropriate for all of the people who are there. So if people don't abide by those rules, we have a whole process where we try to deescalate, we try to work with them. But ultimately, we would have a list of sit-outs that we would work with our local partners on, of when we would discharge somebody from that shelter for a period of time. But we make sure that that's very clear upfront. Another requirement is that you must engage, and that can mean a lot of different things for different people, but you must engage with case management. And so the case management is that just critical piece. This was my big learning curve as I came in. And you realize that that's where a lot of the hard planning and work comes in, of that personalized plan, with the goal being towards housing, but coming up with personalized... towards housing, but coming up with personalized goals. So then, and again, some details to be worked out here, but typically how this would work is as you're working with your case manager, you're making some progress towards those goals, we would want to get you into those interim housing beds. So that would be a step up. These are either those cubbies, you know, which is kind of like a half wall, I don't know if you've seen pictures of these, we could certainly share those with you later. You'd have a little locker in your cubby, a little bit more room, a little bit more privacy, and it's that step towards housing while you're waiting for that next piece. After all of that, we hope that we get you housed from there, and sometimes that journey is short, and sometimes that journey can take a lot longer. Not an exact apples-to-apples comparison, but I can tell you at our village on Sage Street, which is dormitory-style housing, maybe one notch up from that interim housing or cubbies that I'm talking about here, we see the average length of stay being about 10 months, and about 60% of those individuals move on to permanent housing successfully. Next slide. This is just a continuation of some of those services, and again, based on the current scope envisioned by T-HAC, we would actually continue to provide these services 24/7, 365 days for that one-year pilot, and we would allow drop-in services even for those who may not have a bed at the shelter. We will work out what those hours look like, but they could potentially engage with the case manager, have access to showers, bathrooms, and then mail. And this sounds like a very simple thing, but having a stable place to get your mail, whether you're waiting for ID, a social security check, that can be really critical. That's actually where I started with Volunteers of America, was down on Record Street in Reno, 2018, and I was passing out mail to our clients, and it changed my life. It was one of the best experiences, and here I am seven years later on staff. So mail is absolutely critical. We will continue to work with the local community. We want to partner and collaborate with as many entities as possible. We want to bring on those healthcare services, primary care if possible, behavioral health folks onsite when possible, so we will work with partners to do those items. And I don't know, Chief, if we're going to do questions now or if we're going to do that collectively?
We'll do that after the presentations.
Perfect. Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Travis. Next is some partner perspectives. I'll turn it over to Ted Owens with the Hospital District.
Thank you, Chief, and I want to thank all of the electeds for meeting in this historic manner tonight, and there's a reason for that. We are natural partners in this. The chief sitting next to me, law enforcement, as well as some of our very valued staff that are here tonight, can share with you the impact on emergency services in our community. Shelter beds drive healthcare and public safety outcomes, and evidence does suggest that fewer shelter beds end up being an increase in emergency department strain, and we have seen this in the past. This is a difference between us and other locations, like say, Western Nevada County, because we have the snow, because we have the ice, because we have the low temperatures that are not necessarily something that they experience off of the hill. The other thing is patients without safe discharge options often remain in the ER. There's two ways that they approach the emergency department. It can be because, as last year, there's nowhere else to go, and so the waiting room of the ER becomes the de facto shelter. What also happens, though, when there is not a shelter where people can be safe, be warm, and receive services, is that they can actually become emergent and have to be admitted to the emergency department. That can be frostbite, that can be hypothermia. We see more instances of that when we do not have services or do not have a shelter. This is also difficult for Truckee PD, because when the police department, our partner, interacts with folks that are unhoused, and they need to bring them somewhere, we are the option, and that's hard on them and that's hard on us, and it's not fair to the unhoused. So shelter beds give them a safe place, as you have heard, a place where they can shower, they can eat, and they can interact with case managers and be in a safe space. There's also limited authority to relocate unhoused individuals with shelter options. This gives the hospital a place and the police department a place to locate those that are in need in the community that we interface with. It's a challenge when there isn't anything or it's down the hill. Transportation is an issue, services may not be available down the hill, and so we are in great need up here in our region. I also wanted to point out that all T-HAC members support shelter services, and I will tell you in that night, and it's not always the case, but every member, I think it was 11 members if I'm not mistaken, were unanimous in the decisions that were made, and I think that's very, very important to acknowledge. And with that, I believe I'm turning it over to Supervisor Bullock, is that correct? Supervisor.
Yeah, thank you for being here, Hospital Board, Town Council members, and T-HAC members and community members. It is an auspicious day, I hope we can come together and make a solution. I just wanted to touch base, I know it's going to be a lot of information for you, but touch base on some of the items from our perspective that make our partnership unique and probably going to contribute to the success if we can get there. So essentially, you know, I want to talk about homelessness as a community-driven, all-hands approach. Everybody in the room collectively can do it. We can't do it alone. No single agency can do it alone. There's a lot of examples of that that I'll point out in a minute, but here we have the county, the town, NGOs, the hospital, stakeholders collectively making up T-HAC, all coming together for one solution. That's where we're going to find synergy, that's where we're going to make a difference, and that's where I think we're going to be successful ultimately. We have that framework in front of us today. The decision you have in front of you is kind of driven by data and a bunch of reports I'll talk a little bit about in a minute. So the examples of what right looks like, successful joint partnerships, the League of Cities, California State Association of Counties, and NAECO, the National Association of Counties, all kind of agree on this shared model of contribution. It could be a task force, it could be joint strategies. Some of the communities outlining successful implementation of this are listed here. The mayor and the chairman of the Board of Supervisors from Sacramento County is a great example of how you can come together to quickly solve some of the homelessness problems. Are they going to be solved forever? Are every single individual treated, you know, with all of their needs met? Absolutely not, but it's a step in the right direction. Next slide, please. So working together, we can create grant and partner funding opportunities. This includes B-CHIP grants, HAP grants, and new changes to Medicau billing that'll allow us to make the partnership sustainable. You saw the $1.4 million ask, that's a one-time ask. We're all going to contribute. We hope to get it off the ground, create the pilot, see if it works for our community, adjustments may be made. Most importantly, we need to find sustainable funding sources, and those are going to come through grants on every level. While pushing in the same direction, bringing our organizations together, we'll have a greater chance of pulling some of that funding down for our community. A lot of data and analysis has been brought together, and I can't, we can't underestimate or, you know, second-guess the amount of outreach that's occurred. There's essentially four years of planning that's gone into it. Some of the data-driven elements I've listed for you here, community surveys, the gap analysis by Boeing Business Strategies, your own housing element, and then, of course, the Tahoe Truckee Regional Homeless Action Plan that's in front of you. There's also inside those documents, the kind of a compendium of documents that outline the direct cost to our community, and so I think when we talk about what it costs us and how much we're going to contribute, the $1.4 million will be quickly eclipsed by the direct cost that we all feel by serving this population. I think the right thing to do is handle it in the way that we're proposing here, create a pilot navigation center, try and find sustainable funding, figure out what works and what doesn't work, and then try and reduce that overall community cost, to leave those local dollars out of our general fund here for local needs. It's been talked a little bit about, kind of this balance of action and community input. We understand that there's a lot of voices in the community. We saw that throughout 2024, certainly in 2025. We also heard clearly from a T-HAC perspective that action needed to be taken immediately to get our unhoused friends and neighbors and that population out of the cold, out of the elements as soon as possible, and hopefully before the winter sets in. So when you talk about the waiver in the superior jurisdiction required to fast-track the Navigation Center in, that's a key element for us, because if we don't, we're going to be pushed into February or March where the critical months of need for our local population will essentially have slipped by, and we'll be back into another year without that needed services and shelter. We do want to recognize that it's a unique solution in East County. The county is willing, and able, and flexible in its approach to this. That's why we're, you know, talking about taking on the contract with VOA and handling some of these services in a direct manner to try and fast-track it. We're willing to be flexible, we're willing to work through the process, and I'm happy to say that my colleagues on the board are very supportive of the elements that are included in your plan here tonight. I do believe we are building opportunity to build a framework of cooperation. It is a start. There will be bumps in the road. We're going to have to arm wrestle over differences. We're going to have to understand how to get through problems that arise. It's not going to be a perfect solution, but today somebody kind of raised their hand and said, "But wait, it could be, it could actually work great." And I'd like to believe that. I've seen other things in Truckee work just like that. I think we're going to have to be open, but I think the foundation of that success is really in this room tonight with the three organizations and Placer County coming together. You have this unique T-HAC community-driven arm that has public meetings monthly. Anybody from the public can attend those meetings, their voice will be heard, their feedback will be integrated, and we can make a community-driven decision to move forward. I also want to make some special thanks to the participants in T-HAC, Ted Owens, Jen Coway, Mayor Zabriskie, Cindy Bossa, who's not here tonight, who's done a lot of heavy lifting as a community member, and Chief Renfro. It was great to see each one of those people lobbied and lifted on behalf of their own organization, but ultimately, when we disagreed, we came together in some difficult conversations to end up in front of you tonight. So I just wanted to say you have some great staff members and community members contributing to the plan you have in front of you, and I'm proud of the work we've done together. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Bullock, and want to recognize the county staff that's in the room as well, Phoebe, Ryan, Jasmine, I don't know if I see, yes, maybe, no. Okay. Anyways, yeah, they're here to support as well and be able to answer some questions if they do arise. So as of 2:30 today, we had 19 written public comments that we received. 16 were in support of the one-year Pilot Navigation Center, and three of them were in support with the vision and the mission but have some concerns about the inefficient processes, the operations, the neighborhood impacts, with a high level of interest in the details of what a good neighbor policy means and how that really looks. And since then, I've seen probably a half a dozen more come in that I haven't yet to read, but that was since 2:30 today. So with that, becomes recommendations. There's a lot here on the town side. There's actually two pages here of recommendations, so we can go through each one, and I'll turn it over to you guys to deliberate and to decide on which route we're going to go with. So the first one would be approve that the T-HAC identified preferred location at 12315 Deerfield Drive Truckee for a one-year pilot center navigation with interim beds and shelter beds, is the first one. The second one is T-HAC's recommendation that Nevada County exercise superior jurisdictional pursuant to Government Code Sections 53091, and Town Council recognizes that no town action is required for Nevada County to take such action. Number three, adopt Resolution 202567 waiving the statutory 60-day notification period related to the Government Code Section 25351, Part N.B. and Part D. Authorize the town manager to execute a contract with Nevada County in the amount not to exceed $360,000 in a one-time fund for a one-year Pilot Navigation Center Model B, providing up to six interim beds year-round and up to 10 drop-in shelters beds 24/7 year-round and day services, located at 12315 Deerfield Drive. Recommendation two of two, authorize a budget adjustment of up to $360,000 from a one-time federal funds remaining from the American Rescue Plan Act to fund the one-year pilot program. Authorize town staff to expedite tenant improvement permit processing if necessary to facilitate a January 2026 target opening. Provide direction and approve the proposed 120-day Navigation Center pilot community engagement and communications plan. Provide direction to T-HAC to evaluate the success of the pilots after six months to determine if the Pilot Navigation Center is a successful service model. And last but not least, provide direction regarding a call to action for T-HAC to raise additional funds to support the pilot program and prioritize developing a long-term, sustainable funding source to support the continuation of a Pilot Navigation Center should it be extended after the pilot period based on success of said pilot. That was a mouthful. Mayor, how would you like to do this? Would you like to go through this, each one, for council, because these are obviously, these are council recommendations, and then Tahoe Forest Board has their recommendations. How would you prefer?
Let's go ahead and hear the hospital's recommendation. I believe it's a duplicate of one of our nine recommendations.
Yes, it is. Obviously, the Board of Directors of...
I can't bring this guy anywhere.
I'm not touching anything.
You're doing it.
I'm not touching any. Sitting next to a police chief, I'm not touching a thing. Obviously, the Board of Directors of Tahoe Forest Health System does not have any jurisdictional authority over land use, and that's why the Town Council's recommendations are so lengthy. However, the recommendation for the Tahoe Forest members of the Board of Directors, and keep in mind, if we get to making a motion time, the council would make a motion relative to the first set of recommendations, and then a separate call for action would be made of the Board of Directors of the hospital. And that recommendation would be to authorize the president and CEO to execute a contract with Nevada County or a trusted community partner not to exceed $360,000 to support a one-year Pilot Navigation Center to facilitate interim housing for up to six individuals year-round and up to 10 shelter beds 24/7 year-round at 12315 Deerfield Drive Truckee. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm going to pass it off to the Chairman of the Hospital Board, and then also the Pro-Tam co-chair, Director Alice Wong, for any comments, anything I may have missed that they want to address on behalf of the hospital. Before I do that, I wanted to point out, for the order of questioning, it'll start on my far left with Councilmember Polavy, continue on across the dais, and then remotely we have the Board Chair for the hospital, Mr. McGary, and our Vice Mayor, Anna Klovstad. And when we get to the two remote participants, we'll have Anna Klovstad go first, and then last, Chair McGary, if that is all right with you. I see a nod of head from Chair McGary. I know how hard it is to participate remotely. You're just such an isolated position to be in. And then the other thing is, we have nine items for the Town Council. We can break them down into four. One is site selection, then we have a couple that are zoning-related, then the money issue, and then the fourth group are essentially future actions, pretty much assuming the prior items are approved. My inclination, depending on what the hospital and my other council members think, is to allow questioning on any and all of the nine items in one series, not try to do them piecemeal. I'm getting nods of the head from everyone here present. Okay, let me turn to Chair McGary. Is there anything you want to add?
No, no additional comments other than just gratitude. Really a remarkable presentation that reflects countless hours, if not years, of work behind this, so thank you for bringing this forward to us. And again, it can be a disruption being, you know, remote like this, so I'll pass it off to Alice, who's representing us locally and has also been very involved in these activities for any comments.
Okay. So, Pro-Chair Wong, do you have any, on procedural matters, are we missing anything in terms of moving ahead?
No, I think that if we could go ahead with the items that the Town Council has before us... before us, that that would be very helpful.
Okay, all right. So, Councilmember Polavy, you are the lucky one. You get to kick it off.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here. Excellent presentations and just really good information, especially from Volunteers of America. That was my first time hearing from your entity, business organization. So thank you. My questions, I think, are going to be maybe very specific to some of the planning issues before us. And then I also have a few questions from the county. So depending on who from the county is going to be helping us out, you can step forward or be ready at some point soon, too. But who's answering questions on, like, the actual building? Like, the physical building? Does it currently have sprinklers? So... I'm just going to get really down in there right now. Sorry.
Shawna, are you able to answer that, as far as? I have not been inside the site.
Nobody knows if it has sprinklers yet. So that's a kind of a cost. Maybe Hardy does.
The pictures show sprinklers, at least on the first floor.
Okay. So we're good there. There's one box checked. On TIs, Supervisor Bullock, did you have anything to add?
Nope.
Excellent. Thank you. Nice to see you, sir. Okay. Great. We'll just keep going. So for also those in the audience, Town Council has an opportunity to ask questions of our staff on these topics beforehand. We ask a lot of the questions, so I'm not going to repeat a lot of them. They are posted in the public comment section of tonight's meeting as well. So if you hear us, like I'm about to do, refer to some of the questions that were asked prior to the meeting. That's what we are generally referring to. And so I asked a few questions, just sort of regarding the specific action on accelerating the permit processing timelines. And we got some answers back, that they're about 10 to 15 TI permits being reviewed, excluding fire sprinkler. And I guess my question, just from town staff, is, you know, what should this need to be expedited? And I think it said very clearly in the staff report that under normal processing times, expedited processing shouldn't necessarily be needed. So just what kind of delays to other projects or other permits would we anticipate if this project had to go faster, A? And then, B, what would, do we have an opportunity to ask applicants who are in the review process to be a little bit more sensitive, both to what we're trying to accomplish tonight, but also to costs that are real on people who have permits already in the queue, who were unaware that, you know, they may or may not be treated in a timely manner? Do we have a way to say, hey, do you mind if, you know, this other permit takes priority over yours? Because maybe your rent isn't starting for six months or something like that. How would we handle that, I guess? And would we even inform other permates that they weren't necessarily being treated in the manner that we would normally be treating them?
So lots of good questions. And when I put together the response from the written questions earlier, and have a complete answer for you, because it really depends on when the permit comes in and what's already in the queue at the time. But just big picture, we do process tenant improvements concurrently with other projects, such as single families, you know, deck repairs, things like that. So even though we call it a queue, and people think of that as linear, we sort of have boxes that we put them in so that there's concurrent processing happening at the same time. So if a tenant improvement project comes in and it's complete, yes, it's going in a queue, but it's going in sort of the tenant improvement queue, so that we can review those and work on those while we're still working on other things. If we're at a point when it comes in where we have, you know, a lot that we're working on, that we might pull in our third-party plan review to try and help with that. But generally, we're not notifying other projects in the queue of, you know, what's happening unless we're going beyond sort of that goal turnaround time that we have. Like, if we have capacity, we might call and say, hey, we're taking a little bit longer to work on this permit because of these things. But generally, if we're still within our review timeframes, we don't have to do that. I think, you know, given that we're talking about having this come in at a time where we're not as busy, the hope is that we won't have to slow down significantly or noticeably at all, that we'll be able to sort of manage what we have. Because a lot of the tenant improvements that are in right now are pretty far along in the process and should be wrapping up. And we haven't heard of any significant new ones sort of on the horizon at the moment. So I think that shows that we should be able to adapt and not have a significant impact.
And just process it normally, and that theoretically is fast enough to get to the deadlines that were being met, depending on, of course, the efficacy of said application.
Yeah.
Okay. So is there, like, a dedicated planner? Who's going to work on the tenant improvement Not a dedicated planner, but like a consultant. Do we have consultants hired? Are we ready to go?
I think Phoebe Bell can answer many of the contract and TI pieces.
Hi, Phoebe.
Hi. Phoebe Bell, behavioral director for Nevada County. And we're currently, we have our facilities department and purchasing department engaged in the early stages of lease negotiations with the owner. And they would help be working with the property owner. The property owner is interested in doing the TIs himself. And so we're working with Travis and VOA on what exactly do you need, working with the property owner for, you know, bids and plans on what that would look like, and making sure all that fits within the budget and within the program requirements.
Awesome. Thank you. Maybe I'll just kick us off with the million-dollar question that is on all of our minds, but maybe somebody from the county who wants to handle what happens in year two. Should everything go swimmingly? What's the long-term strategy? And how do you foresee this playing out?
Yeah, it's a great question. It was part of the expectation management that I personally have been talking a lot about. We would dig into that as soon as we kicked it off. And essentially, we've been focused on getting those people undercover, providing wraparound services, and moving them from the shelter model into supportive housing and on through the continuum of care that you saw in front of you. We need to get in and start figuring that out. And so one thing we've been really transparent about is this site may not be conducive to a long-term solution. It may include one of the other sites that was shown on the slide, the dots in some of the locations. That's a community conversation that's going to take additional input. Right now, we're focused on getting those people out of the elements. But to your point, I think the next point of order, and the next order of business for T-HAC as a whole, is sitting down and saying, where, how much, who's the provider, who's going to pay for it, and how do we get there? Because right now, my colleagues on the board have no intention of making long-term commitments on this, as I'm sure the Town Council and other bodies, such as the hospital district, are in the same boat. So yeah, it's going to be the next nine-month period of hard work in front of us.
Yeah, I don't necessarily agree or disagree with that statement of long-term, because we do have to amortize these costs over time. So, you know, whenever you're doing a TI or you're doing these types of lease agreements, you know, long-term stability is a better thing, at least in my opinion. But we'll hold that for deliberation.
Can I mention one more thing?
Of course, Supervisor.
The conversation about options related to the lease agreement, so multi-year options related to the lease agreement, and then, probably your next question of first right of refusal on purchasing of properties is definitely under consideration. And that's part of what Phoebe's going to spend probably considerable time discussing before she brings the final lease agreement to any of the elected bodies.
So you are looking at renewal agreements, first right of refusals, five-year renewals, or some number of years as part of this initial one-year lease?
Yeah, we haven't talked about five-year, but we understand the property has been for sale. We understand that the market rate associated with the property and what we're paying for, and the TIs are going to have to be amortized over something reasonable. We all want more, and we all want to make it work. And I think it would be simpler in the long run for our community to have a fixed location such as this. Whether our community needs that and we can pay for it, that's the next question that we have to work out.
Bravo for getting back to us so quickly, since we've last all seen each other on this topic. And I will, my questions are done for now. Thank you.
As Councilmember Polavy indicated, particularly because this is an unusual situation, there will be an opportunity for a council member or a director to come back and say, I forgot something, or another question that happened after mine triggered something. We'll allow that, of course. That's okay with you? Yeah, okay. Okay, so now it's Director Brown.
Great. Yes, thank you. I'm Mary Brown. I'm with the Tahoe Forest Hospital District Board. And I want to add my thanks to everybody else's tonight. This is really quite a remarkable evening. But my, I honestly do not have any questions as it relates to the need or the urgency around this type of a shelter. My questions primarily have to do with operations, and I don't know how deeply I want to get into all of those weedy questions, if you will. My primary question, and I think Supervisor Bullock, you touched on this, but my question is, okay, this is a one-year project with an interim analysis in six months to see how it's going, see how successful it is. My question has to do with, what does success look like? How will we know when this is done, if this has been a successful project?
I think that we need to sit down and define some of those metrics together. I would suggest a handful of things to look at. One is, in my opinion, the census, is the shelter actually being fully utilized by the people identified in the original needs assessment? And sheltering those individuals, to me, is one success metric. That is a start. That's not the end of the road, but that's a start. We would certainly want to be tracking calls for service. We would want to be looking at, are these individuals utilizing public resources more or less? And I put some of these things a little bit more generally, and I've had to deal with this in other communities. We, again, we do have some data based on the work that's previously been done. But especially with this pilot, year one is going to be creating some baseline metrics, and getting that data in place and understanding the scope of the challenge. As some of your permanent supportive housing comes online, I think that will also be very instructive of whether we get a good amount of throughput out of the shelter into that housing. So a traditional metric on any shelter is the number of individuals who are successfully housed. And then, over time, we would track the recidivism, for lack of a better term, recidivism of folks who come back in to the shelter, who, for whatever reason, were not stably housed. So I would suggest that those are the starting points for tracking metrics.
Thank you. And I appreciate the fact that they're objective and can readily be analyzed. While we have you there with VOA, one of the questions that arose in my mind was also, we have a wonderful resource in this town with the Sierra Community House. And I tell that Paul is here. I want to make sure that you are working in concert, that there's a synergy there, that these are not two organizations acting in silos.
Yeah. And I hope that that came through in our proposal. And again, I'm operating on a fairly short window in terms of the proposal and the slide deck. But I've been in these conversations with individuals. And I think that your committee, I hope, can testify to the fact that throughout this, we have never tried to enter this community and tell the community what it needed. We want to collaborate. We need to collaborate. And we 100% want to work alongside other entities that are in this community. So that's my personal commitment. That's where we have found ourselves very successful in other communities. Prior to moving to Reno, I was in the international development space in Zambia, and it drove me nuts watching different nonprofits try to reinvent the wheel. And so I am very much about efficiency. And I shared this with one of the colleagues earlier. Ultimately, from VOA's standpoint, and I think this is one of the upsides of being a nonprofit, our north star is the client, and number two is the community. And so ultimately, even if somebody else does a portion of the services, even if a portion of our grant goes someplace else, ultimately, that's our north star. And so that's what we come back to. And so that's our commitment to the other entities in town.
And while you're there, I want to put on the healthcare hat for a minute and ask what kind of experience, and I'm sure it's large, VOA has had with mental health and substance use disorders.
Yeah. So we're in the process. We want to better, I think that's a piece that VOA, over time, that we have lost the middle of that continuum. We have a lot in the housing space. We have a lot in the shelter space. We do have a lot of case management. Down in one of my programs in Reno, I do have a mental health counselor on staff. I would actually plan to rely on her some in this particular instance. She is licensed in substance abuse counseling. We don't currently operate sobering centers or detox centers in this particular region. But in terms of our experience, and I think that anybody who comes and walks one of our shelters, we are very much experienced of helping to coordinate the care for those individuals. And a huge percentage of our folks in our shelters have severe mental illness, or substance abuse disorder, or a co-occurring. And again, we all know that that's a very hard thing to unpack. The other thing on the medical front, if I may, that we are starting to see, and that I think will be a great discussion with the hospital in particular, is we see more and more people who come in who can't do their activities of daily living. Very challenging. Our staff are phenomenal at moments, keeping me up at night, because they blur the line of probably who should be allowed to come in. But that's definitely something that we're only going to see more of when you see a senior population. So that's the start of an answer. We certainly collaborate closely with the mental health and other healthcare entities and collaborate. But we do have some of that in-house as well.
Thank you.
Just to add a little bit to that, I think one of the great things about the collaboration that's behind this project and the partnership is that they exist, and to your original point of not replicating services that already exist. It's leaning into, what do we have in place already, and then what are the gaps that we need VOA to fill? And so specifically around mental health or substance use services, the county has robust services in those areas. And the goal is to link people to existing services versus replicate them. Healthcare services, like what are the hospital services that we need to link people to better and have case managers who can help get them to appointments, make those appointments, you know, braid their resources together. Sierra Community House has all kinds of food services, case management services, whatever it might be. How do we use what's here and not pay twice for the same services?
Thank you, Bill.
And to just echo that, we've been very successful with Washoe County at the Nevada Cares Campus. The county provides the behavioral health services, and so we work closely with them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I have just a few questions. I'm going to keep it short, because I'm sure there's a lot of public comment. There have been multiple channels of community outreach, community outreach meetings, newsletter, radio, and more. But I know some of the public comments we've received have maybe been a little less than thrilled with all of the public outreach. So would you just provide a little bit more color on all of the public outreach that has occurred? And Supervisor Bullock, maybe just reiterate how community members can continue to be engaged if this happens to move forward tonight.
Yeah, thanks for the question. It's valuable. It's a valuable time in summarizing that. It's an important part of our community. I think from my perspective, from 2024, we had, and this is off from memory, so I don't have it in front of you, maybe 18 different touchpoints, newsprint, radio, media, in-person meetings, order supervisors, public notice meetings, public notice meetings of the Town Council in advance or precursory to the construction of the T-HAC group. Once T-HAC was clearly established, I want to say in March or April, then we had regular monthly meetings, where notice public meetings, just like any notice public meeting. We've done targeted outreach in different areas, one of them being the area in Donner Lake by the subject property. Those have been direct outreach. I think Shawna's done two or three. You've walked the neighborhood once. We've had one outreach meeting. And so that's essentially what we've done to date. One of the problems, and we recognize this in all forms of government, is that people are busy with their lives, and they're trying to raise their kids and do other things. And they don't necessarily think about the people in this room, the government, taking action on community-driven character-building or community-building objectives, you know, in the town. And then all of a sudden, something happens next to our house or my house, and all of a sudden, it's like, hey, where's the process been? There has been a robust, community-driven process. Going forward, T-HAC, in my mind, is one of the co-chairs. Going forward, THAC, in my mind, is one of the co-chairs, and Mayor Zabriskill and the other, Cindy Bossel, will have to support this, but, you know, getting together and staying together monthly and having those routine, monthly, noticed meetings. We also have an ICT group, a leadership group. I've talked about this at my CCC group. We've also had numerous local meetings, one-on-one. The other piece I will say is that we, I believe myself and everybody in this room has an open-door policy. My number is printed everywhere. You can Google my name and get all of my contact information, call me up, and you can sit down and talk, and you can sit down and talk with our staff. And so we're here available for that.
And for members of the public who are here tonight, when and where did the monthly THAC meetings occur?
That's a great question. It's, can somebody?
Yeah, so the meetings happen here in this chamber.
Yeah, and they're Wednesday, Wednesdays.
Just go to the website.
Yeah, and we've changed them time to time, so we've done additional outreach at night so people can make it. But they'll be noticed, we have a website that'll tell you when they are.
So anyone could go to the THAC website, see the next meeting, and come here to attend the meeting if they want to?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Building on the wonderful question of what does success actually look like, one of my questions was, what is our plan for how and what we're actually evaluating for the one-year pilot? And I know Supervisor, I think you made a comment on, you know, in part, we'll have to define that together. So I guess it leads me to what will be the process for defining a robust evaluation process for this pilot?
I'm going to let Travis and also Phoebe jump in there, but from my perspective, I mean, I think it would include any of the above metrics we've talked about, moving people from the homeless sector into supportive housing, supportive beds. We have supportive beds coming online. Are those being filled? Are we providing food insecurity and justice support for the population that's in the shelter? Are we having community-driven complaints that are taking up and consuming a massive amount of staff time? Are EER and ED visits down? Are those things reduced? Do we see some cost savings from our hospital partners? Can the law enforcement community vouch for the fact that they're doing less intervention on a crisis management basis and really directing people toward more of a continuum of care treatment-type model where we can help people actually solve it? But that's from my perspective, I'm not an expert.
And while they're coming up to the podium there, we do track all contacts that we have, and we do identify folks that are unhoused and are needing services. And so that's something that we can track historically with, you know, within the last 10 years, so that's something that we have access to.
I don't know that I have a lot more to add to this, other than, I mean, look, we want and need to get people housed. I mean, you heard the statistics earlier, that has to be a critical metric. I think part of the reason why I'm hedging a little bit in my response here and why we need to hear from the community and from THAC about those metrics of success is sometimes what will happen is we will set an arbitrary number on housing, and I've watched this happen time and time again, and then the right housing is not there. And I think putting myself in the shoes of one of our case managers or housing navigators, even if there is an empty unit, a lot of landlords are not wanting to directly rent to some of our clientele. It requires building relationships, it requires building trust in the ongoing services. And so, but I can't really emphasize this or emphasize this enough, we've got to get people housed. But I also would like to work with the community on developing more of what I would call a well-being score, kind of that, how have we actually helped improve the health and well-being of this individual during their time with us as well?
No, this is great. I think the only things I would add is, you know, that original continuum you saw, this is a piece of a continuum, it is not the solution. This will not solve all things related to people experiencing homelessness. It is a piece of the picture. It is a piece that keeps people hopefully from dying on our streets and trucking, most importantly. I think, secondly, this is a key thing for the THAC group to grapple with. It's the responsibility of us collectively to define what does success look like for our community, what are the metrics for each of the steps along the process that we need to implement eventually, and that's town staff, hospital staff, community partners, county staff, working together to define those things.
And once that's defined, and as we, if we get into the pilot chief, is the intention that an update on those metrics would come back to council at that interim period?
Yeah, I envision probably a few presentations on how the process is going, above and beyond the six-month check-in.
Thank you. Last question, because we've talked about sustainable funding, or, you know, right now, the lack of sustainable funding, really, and I know grants have been mentioned a few times. Are there specific grant opportunities that are already being looked to for future that might be able to be leveraged, recognizing the grant landscape changes all the time? Are we looking at federal grants, because there's a lot happening with the federal administration that could influence whether those are available in the future, state grants, others, just kind of an overview of the lay of that land?
Yeah, I was, and talking to Ryan, and Phoebe can probably mention it, the grant landscape is like, you know, highly volatile at this point on the federal level. But yeah, there are a number of grants, Phoebe, do you want to describe the type of, I mean, we're constantly looking for them, and it's our community hope to bring forward other grant pieces. The connection is, and Ryan describes it well, is that the project and the grant have to intersect in a timely way, and so if we can't capitalize on grant funding that comes toward us, then that passes us by, that grant gets used elsewhere, and then our community loses that money. I would like to think, and just from my perspective, and I'm not an expert in every piece, but if we had a pilot navigation center model that was up and running and operational, and it was meeting the needs of our community, and a grant came along to intersect it in that open-period window, that we may be more successful than a community that's not shovel-ready, that doesn't have any infrastructure, doesn't have a project, and doesn't have the will of the community, and then we will certainly lose the grant opportunity at that point.
Thank you. That's it for me, Mayor.
Let me go to success. What I understand on the measures for success so far are the impacts on law enforcement, the impacts on emergency healthcare, and maybe other hospital services, like when people are released from surgery, having a place to go, and then the housing outcomes. And so the police chief just told us that the police department has records going back 10 years to assess how much of a demand on services homeless have created. Does a hospital, Ted, does a hospital have historical records that identify homeless people, so we already would have a baseline, or not? Or do you know?
I do not know. We do have staff that is here, would that be Katie or Trent, that might be able to answer that? I need you at the microphone, though, to do it.
Thank you. Yeah, and the question is, do we already have hospital information that would identify usage categorized by homeless?
And Katie, if you would, please tell us your name and your role in ED.
Katie Lamb, I'm the manager at the emergency apartment at Tower Forest. We do track our homeless contacts through case management. The hospital is actually mandated by the state of California to provide certain services to our homeless patients who come through the hospital, so they track contacts, what services they were offered, and what their eventual disposition was, as well as how much time they spent with each patient.
Okay, so given all the variabilities from one year to the next, you probably experienced, we still have some data that would allow us to make some kind of comparison to what happens if we go ahead and approve a one-year pilot?
Yes, I think there's room for improvement of our tracking. I'd like to see us become more robust, but yes, we do have historical data that we could compare against.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add one piece to that? I think it's important to just note that there's the people who get served by this project, and it's relatively possible to track during the times of their involvement, are they arrested, do they go to the hospital, do they do it at rates different than how they did it prior to being involved in case management and stable living environment, et cetera. And then there's sort of the background world of more people may fall into homelessness as health insurance coverage disintegrates, as food supports disintegrate. There may be more utilization of services, not because the people getting this service are getting failed by it, but because the economic situation changes, for example. And so it's where this kind of data gets a little bit tricky to sort of hang your hat on.
Exactly, right. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. Yeah, there's a lot of variables that could skew the analysis. And there's been a question about personal safety that's come up time and time again, the idea that homeless will increase crime, or either property damage or affect personal safety. There was a slide on good neighbor policy, is that to address that risk? And could you briefly summarize that again for me, Travis?
Yeah, that's a portion of it. I mean, we think it's essential for the success of the project to make sure that the project works for the community that's around it. And so those policies are just sort of the starting point for that conversation. I think last night, I committed, I believe VOA and some of the other members need to be meeting with that community on a monthly basis to start with, hearing how things are going from their perspective, hear those concerns, which are sometimes, sometimes a feeling, right? We also want people to feel safe, so I understand that. So the good neighbor policy is a piece of that. I think from a, also from a safety standpoint, it is some of those policies and procedures, the expectations that are set for the individuals that are engaging with those services. So again, no weapons on site, no drugs or alcohol on site, those bag checks, and again, the behavioral policies that are in place to ensure the safety of everybody on site.
Okay. Maybe a related question is, which I've repeatedly heard, is why does this cost so much?
Yeah, so I think if you look at the proposal and the document, and this is a unique community, the cost of living here and the wage rates, I mean, I thought that I was aware of the wage rates here, and as we were looking for the site, you know, the Taco Bell there is starting wages at $21.50 an hour. And so the wages to get somebody to work in this space is definitely at a premium of some other communities. This is also of an awkward scale and size, and there are pros and cons to that. Some of the pros are, it will be much easier to measure the data and look at some of the results, whereas in our 549-bed shelter, we have so many different groups of people and different reasons for coming into homelessness that it is sometimes hard to figure out exactly where to put your finger on some of the causes. Also, and in the proposal, you'll see, we, from a safety standpoint, require there to be two staff on site at any given time. And so we try to keep a 1 to 25 ratio of staff to participants. And so if you start to think about that, the cost is really no different to have 25 people there versus the 16. And then similarly, we try to keep, and it depends on the acuity level of the individuals we serve, the case management ratios are between 15 and 30. And so again, you would only see an incremental cost increase to get up to 50. My point being, you have no economies of scale in this particular situation. I think that's why we landed on offering the additional, you know, 10 beds in additional to the six interim housing beds year-round. So that's a big piece of it, and I understand, and I reached out to one of our shelter directors, and I said, is there any way I could cut an FTE? And she said, absolutely not. And so I think for, again, the safety and security of both our staff and the participants, and anybody who has run a 24/7 institution, the hospitals, I have so much respect, it is so hard. I mean, think about the call-outs and getting coverage. You're in a mountain community with snow, you know, I'm definitely paying attention to those things from a staffing perspective. So it's the staffing model and the lack of economies of scale. It is also the insistence that we believe you need the service component, the care coordination component, integrated into this to make sure that we get the community what it needs and move these participants towards some personalized goals.
Okay, and then I heard that this might draw in more homeless. We may have people coming up here to avail themselves of our fine services if we approve this. What's that risk?
It's a logical hypothesis, right? And we've certainly heard that. I'll share two things. One is anecdotally, down at the Nevada Cares Campus, which is one of the probably three, but definitely top five known shelters in the country. It's particularly, it's a known hub, right? And so the argument goes, you know, if you build it, they will come. And we have not seen that. I think even in the Reno area, the weather alone, and this was an eye-opener for me, being down at the Resource Center and the mailroom, these are not pleasant conditions to be unhoused. And so I think that that might be a more compelling argument in a different community. I checked on our data from last month. We are getting much better at digging into the why and where folks are coming from. Down at the Nevada Cares Campus, we saw less than 10 individuals coming from out of town. When you dig into the why, oftentimes, it was because they had been offered a job or a family member had enticed them there, and then the job or something fell through, and they found themselves stranded. They are oftentimes good candidates for that diversion program. There is only one, what I would consider to be, and maybe Phoebe could speak to this, there's only one major study that I know that's been done, and that's out of UCSF, which on California homelessness, they challenged this hypothesis, and they looked at this, and they looked at the variables. 90% of the homelessness in California is from California, and it is predominantly caused by the cost of housing. And 75% of those individuals come from the county in which they originally resided. And Phoebe, is that, yeah, so Phoebe has the same study.
Okay. And then finally, maybe this is for someone else, why don't we wait a while? Why are we doing this in such a hurry? Why are we trying to put this in place now?
Since I'm here, I'll answer that from my perspective. It's back to that human component, and I can't answer this for your community. This community, and I think THAC has certainly looked at this, what is it worth to this community to ensure that individuals will not freeze during the winter? And it's hard to put a price tag to that. I think number two is ensuring that we start the process. And again, you saw this very robust analysis, and one of my great fears is that we are oftentimes made the scapegoat because we've not solved homelessness. This is just one piece. But to start is a huge step forward, and the stakes are high, Mayor. I think anybody who owns a business or otherwise, the stakes are high that if you do nothing, the implications of that for businesses and others, and just the human impact, can be extreme. But I'll leave it to your colleagues to answer that.
Yeah, Mayor, maybe, you know, I'll jump in and ask Danny to correct me. I mean, I think from a town staff perspective, you know, we've heard input from the council members previously of having a high level of interest in trying to make sure there are resources for the unhoused in the wintertime. So I think, you know, that question you're asking is probably, you know, broad and goes to the full membership of the THAC as opposed to, you know, just the county or just Volunteers of America. So, and I'll ask Chief Renfro to--
Yeah, just to add on to that, I mean, that's really what we heard the community say throughout all these community outreach events that we've had, is, you know, we need to get something in place, the idea, get something in place before the snow flies.
Thank you. And then I just, my remaining questions are on the TI improvements. This site was previously occupied by the Waldorf School, correct? They ran a school there. Was that in compliance with the building code, that operation?
Yes.
Okay. And then, in terms of the TI improvements that would occur here, is that primarily more bathrooms and improvements to the kitchen, and then the cubicle walls?
Yeah, I think you've highlighted the essentials. We need to walk that with the facility staff and ensure that, but we brought in our chief operating officer and one of our shelter directors to identify those basics. So it's primarily bathrooms, the showers, and then the partitions for the cubbies with a few other small items.
Okay, and then whoever's my real estate person, when we're talking about amortization, wouldn't these improvements also increase the value of the building? The resale value of the building, or not?
They could, yeah. So if, it depends on the nature of the improvement. So if, for instance, the building doesn't have sprinklers now, and then, you know, we pay for sprinklers, and then we don't use the building in the future, that would be a direct increase in the value of the building. If it's, you know, building cubbies and things like that that may not be useful for a future tenant, then they may not necessarily have value.
Okay, thank you.
It's going to depend.
Okay. Before I pass it on to our Pro Tem Chair, I wanted to mention, I have been involved in looking for a homeless solution for probably about five years. I was on the THAC Committee-- I was on the T.HAC Committee, and then I've participated in the meetings. I've gone and looked at the various locations being proposed for a site. I've spoken with people who have many concerns and questions about it, and heard their arguments and reasons for not having a shelter or having it in a different place. And I've heard many proponents. It took me a really long time to try and list all the facts and opinions I've heard. But I'm mentioning this as a disclosure, that I have learned a lot more information than what I'm hearing before you tonight. And in terms of the town being part of the T.HAC endorsements, those have been staff that has joined into the recommendations and not me or any other council members. Primarily because I'm going to be one of the people up here who has to make a decision tonight. So with that, I'm going to now pass it on to our co-chair Wong.
I've been part of the T.HAC since its inception, and I'm really excited to see the people that are interested in helping our unhoused neighbors. I think that in the past, we've had mostly volunteers. We've had a resource center based at churches in which we provided food and shelter and clothing. But again, it's something that continues on in this community, and we can't necessarily rely on volunteers to come every time we need somebody. So to be able to have a resource center, such as in our pilot study, is going to be very, very helpful to us, not only to shelter our neighbor, but also to collect the data to see what is it that's needed in this community. The concern I have has been the staffing, and I think Travis, you've addressed part of that. I think that will always be a challenge up here. It's a challenge sometimes at the hospital, especially with the weather that we have. If they're not here, we will probably have to house the help in order to have them here for the next day. My question to you is, as you're staffing, how you go about doing that? And then my second question is, you have two, two different groups of people. You have the interim housing group that have, for whatever reason, don't have a place to stay, and then you have the emergency shelter. I'm not sure that they still have the same values and the same directions, and how do you handle both types? And how do you engage them yet separate them?
Yeah, so I'll start with that piece, and then we can back up to the staffing piece, if that's okay. So what we would envision in walking this site is the interim housing beds, those cubbies, would be in a separate area. And we've definitely seen this at our other shelters, where you start in essentially a cot or a bunk bed. You have a less privacy, less space. And then the idea is that that would then be a step up into that other space. And that comes back to the case management of the personalized approach of what works for that particular individual, and making sure that they continue moving on through their goals. So it's not perfect, having it all in one site, but we certainly have seen that success by just having a different area that has a bit more privacy. You've got a locker right there. It starts to feel like your own space. That can be a very special thing to those individuals, so that's different. To the staffing, and then if there's any follow-up, they're certainly happy to answer that. Staffing is certainly what is keeping me up at night, right? And so this is going to need to be a collaborative effort. I put that in the proposal. We are going to need help as we go out and we look for these individuals. We certainly have staff internally within VOA. We currently have 500 staff within our organization, 250 of those are in Reno. And I can draw on those to a limited respect in terms of the initial ramp-up, especially the expertise. And we may find that some of those individuals may be able to help us and come up the hill. But we would primarily be hoping to recruit from within this committee, or community, especially for the leadership posts. But it's going to be a matter of advertising the positions, both online, in-person, working with community partners, community college, you name it. We are going to work with our HR team to be looking at all of those avenues.
Certainly that is going to be key to having a sustainable place for our unhoused. Because if you can't have regular staff, then it's going to fall apart.
Absolutely. Yep, agreed. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all my questions.
House Member Rouman.
Thank you. Some great questions, just two more quick ones. And I know staff answered this in advance, but just to cover again, I know council's being asked to utilize ARPA funds, which I believe might have been previously earmarked for something, but staff is fully comfortable with us using those funds at this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And just a quick question. Travis, appreciate the detail on the good neighbor policy, but I'm actually going to turn to the chief. I know some of our questions from community members were related to that. Would you or your staff be part of identifying the good neighbor policy or helping out with that to ensure it's robust enough to meet the needs of our community?
Yes, I see our staff at the police department working very closely with VOA and Travis and T.HAC, as well as the neighborhood, to make sure that any issues are resolved or addressed, and really partnering with VOA for the most part to, because they understand how to de-escalate, how to handle situations like this, as do we, but at different levels. And so when they call for us, that we know that it's not, you know, that it's probably, you know, they need our help. And so working from that baseline and really addressing those concerns right away is going to be key.
Great, thank you. That's it.
Dr. Chamblin.
Much of the work that's been done so far in this discussion tonight has been Truckee-centric. The Tahoe Forest Hospital District serves a much broader area. For instance, I live in Tahoe Vista, and from time to time in hospital deliberations, I feel like I'm representing everything from Kings Beach down to Tahoma. I'm just curious to know if somebody in that area needs services, are they going to be able to come here to Truckee to avail themselves of it?
Yeah, I'll let Phoebe probably jump in, but Brown Bear Studios has been open for about a year, which is a Placer County resource with 14 supportive beds and shelter operations, and then also things in Alderato County as well. But I don't know if somebody wants to jump in and talk about the shirt. Yes, they will be accommodated in Nevada County and at this shelter.
Yeah, and I can just jump in there as well. So part of the funding request is from Placer County of $75,000. So as Supervisor Bullock did say, you know, they do have the Brown Bear Studios there as well, but this funding request would allow, obviously if approved or not approved, but this would be an opportunity for folks on the Placer County side to get housing if needed.
Okay. And then one other question. Are the backers of these programs exposing themselves to any uninsured costs? If property damage, personal injury occurs from these residents, how is that going to be handled?
I've got part of that question. So Volunteers of America, we do, and it is included in our proposal, we do carry liability coverage. In terms of property damage, sometimes that's not going to rise to the level of that policy. Certainly, that could hit the entity holding the lease, and the lease is going to ultimately, and I defer to Phoebe, but the lease is going to drive some of those conversations. But VOA does carry GL policies to help cover.
That's all.
Now it goes to our remote participants. Vice Mayor Kluftod, any questions?
I want to thank everybody there who all asked phenomenal questions. I have all my questions answered. Thank you.
And then Chairman Gary.
Yeah, good evening. Again, the benefit of going last, most of my questions have been addressed. I'm still stuck on some of the sustainability, though, and would love, probably directed towards, you know, Travis, for perhaps examples beyond grant funding that may, that they may have seen in other communities, or, you know, where does philanthropy come into play? Recognizing, as has been mentioned, that the grant landscape right now is very uncertain. But have you seen some other creative solutions, you know, in other communities that you operate?
Yeah, certainly braided funding is going to be the buzzword in our community. It's a lot harder to pull off successfully than it sounds. We certainly, VOA is currently in negotiations, working with an entity to help us be able to better bill Medicaid for some of the services. The future of CalAim is potentially uncertain, but we would certainly be looking at pulling in some Medicaid pieces to help cover the cost. But that would need to be done in partnership with Nevada County. We need to be very careful that we don't double-dip. But yes, braiding and funding, VOA already does that. We have to fundraise for about 10% of everything we do every year. So philanthropy is already built into our model. But certainly looking at Medicaid, particularly within California, is a part of what some of our entities are doing. I don't want to offer this example as a silver bullet, but I know that one of my sister affiliates lost funding for their shelter, and they were able to shift to a Medicaid model. It is not without its challenges, and philanthropy is continuing to cover the gap, as is one of the hospital entities. And it is much more limited in who is eligible to come there, particularly around medical respite or what's called recuperative care. But those are the models that we are looking at, and we would certainly be looking to partner with these entities to look at that and to share for what it's worth. This is a bit of a leap of faith for my organization. I'm here early, there is no contract, right? And certainly, something of this duration would not normally be something that would pass our risk management. I'm sure I'm making my CFO very, very nervous. But we also believe in it, and we want, and we're committed to collaborating with you all, if that's what you believe is needed for your community, which is what I have heard. And so we are willing to step forward, and that's our mission.
Thank you. I appreciate the additional clarity. That's the only question I had.
Okay, are we ready to move on to public comment?
I would love to, can I ask one more question? And I will be super brief, and I really appreciate all of you being here. But I think it's important, because we haven't touched on it yet. And we have Mr. Grover here. So the county, you've been through a super-long day, and I don't know if you're the right person to answer this, maybe Phoebe can, but you've talked to us about supportive housing, specifically at Pacific Crest Commons before. We understand that there are going to be six supportive housing units coming online as soon as that development is ready, and they will be prioritized to Nevada County residents. With all of that said, what is your current, waitlist currently look like for your supportive housing units in the entire county? And what is the plan? Because one of my concerns is, we already have a waitlist. I don't know the answer, so once you tell me what the answer is on the waitlist. But how do we move people when all of our supportive housing, specifically in the Artist's Lost, Coldstream, and Pacific Crest Commons is full? Then what do we do? With the folks who are using these interim beds?
I mean, that's, I'll start at that end and go back to the other part, but, I mean, that's, thus we have homelessness in California. It's not like nobody understands that we need to house people, and we know how to house people, but there aren't enough beds, and therefore, there are hundreds of thousands of people sleeping on the streets every night in California right now. So waitlists aren't really a thing for supportive housing beds. We have a point-in-time count, we have our HMIS system, we have a coordinated entry system. We have a few hundred people waiting for beds that we're working with, that are actively engaged. We have a significant amount of people in the behavioral health treatment system who are engaged in treatment services, who are unhoused and waiting for beds. Pacific Crest Commons specifically is 10 units of supportive housing. It will be prioritized for Truckee folks who have behavioral health needs and who are experiencing homelessness or at high risk of homelessness. So that's our goal. And I think that that will partner really nicely with this project initially, because we should have, you know, a pretty sizable throughput, as Travis said, pretty quickly once those beds open, straight from this service into those beds. After that, the rest of the housing up here isn't what we would call supportive housing, it's subsidized housing. And the good news is, it exists, and there's a fair bit of it. The bad news is, there's waitlist for all those beds also. But we would certainly be working on getting people in line for those beds. Case management really helps, because you can help somebody get sort of housing ready. All their documents are in place, they've got their applications completed, they've cleaned up their credit history, they've cleared their, you know, whatever criminal history, things that need to get cleaned up before somebody can be an effective applicant for housing. So you do the best you can to get people in the units that are available, and then we keep looking for opportunities to add to the housing supply, knowing that it's got to be somehow cost-subsidized.
I guess maybe just putting it slightly more clearly, like, do, this wasn't going to exist as of a month ago.
Sure.
Pacific Crest Commons was. What, those beds, those units were already anticipated to be filled, regardless of this extra piece of the puzzle, right? So are we, I know this sounds crass, but like, we're creating a pipeline that we can't necessarily fill? Is that a risk we're taking?
Which pipeline can't we fill?
Because of, because of the demand.
Meaning that we'll bring people into shelter and interim housing and have nowhere to put them afterwards?
Precisely.
Sure. And, like, those same people are here anyway, struggling and dying on the streets. And so the idea is like, and also that, like, some people, like, when they get into a stable living environment and the stress of survival subsides, a lot of their symptoms can subside, they can engage in some treatment services, they can suddenly get on a path to employment, to actually finding housing on their own, being an effective housemate or renter on their own, and not need supportive housing or permanent subsidized housing. So you, like, it's not like we get no throughput when new housing doesn't come online. There are units out there. People have a much better chance of getting into those units from an interim setting than from the streets. It's really hard to be housing-ready when you're sleeping outside and thinking about where you're going to put your bed down tonight.
And hopefully, the tenants are ready for that experience versus sort of some of the issues that we've seen happen in the past?
Sure. And that's the difference between supportive housing and just subsidized housing is the level of supportive services.
Thank you.
A couple points, since you called on me. So this project specifically, Ryan River Health and Services Director for Nevada County, this specific project wasn't necessarily envisioned even a month ago, really, like three weeks ago is when this really started becoming real. But it was a known gap, and I'd call back to Shawna's slide around the spectrum of need and the Navigation Center being one piece of that spectrum. So it was something that is, has been a priority for T.HAC and is a known gap. I will add additionally, as Phoebe said, there, like, it's a real constraint, the lack of availability of housing, and as Travis said, that's a core underlying feature that creates homelessness. What we have as part of that T.HAC plan is an analysis of the need for permanent supportive housing in the region, and that number was 44 units of permanent supportive housing. And with Brown Bear Studios and then with these 10 units, that's 24 out of the 44 units. That's actually pretty darn good in terms of penetration rate for permanent supportive housing, even when compared to western Nevada County. So just a couple points. And also, sorry, permanent supportive housing, people have to be engaged in local services. That's not something that's come-one, come-all from any community. That's somebody who's going to be identified by the Behavioral Health Department to be placed in that unit from the community.
Yeah. And, Mayor, sorry to interrupt, the, it sounds like our video, we're having some video issues. It's, I believe that maybe the questions from council and the board members are close to being wrapped up. Staff is suggesting we take a brief break right now, let people use the restroom, and make sure, and get our video issues solved.
I think that's about where we are. Are there any last questions? Okay. What we're going to do is take a 10-minute break. When we come back, we'll go into public comment. When we come back, we'll go into public comment. Okay, if everybody could take their seat, the meeting is now back in order. We finished the first round of questioning by the council and now we're going to go to public comments. What I would like is if people who have public comments would line up on the wall over by the podium side of this room. You will each have three minutes. We're going to hold you strictly to the three minutes, given the number of comments we have tonight. Please address your comments to the council and the board. And what else? It'd be nice if you state your names and if you're affiliated with an organization to identify the organization as well. Okay, it looks like you're shuffling around, picking the best spot. Who would like to go first? Really, it's an honor to go first. Who would like it? Lisa?
Supervisor.
Perfect. Let's start with a Board of Supervisors, the Board of Nevada County.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me go first, I guess. So my name is Lisa Swarthout. I'm actually the District Three County Supervisor. I represent the city of Grass Valley and some of the outskirts. And I just wanted to offer up a couple of comments here this evening for some context for how we deal with some of these issues on the western side of the county. So first and foremost, I want to say I have the utmost respect for the town of Truckee. I always have been. I came from city government, I was on the Grass Valley City Council for 16 years, four years as mayor, so I really respect all the work that you guys have done up here. Truckee is an amazing place. I grew up in Nevada County, can tell you back in the 70s and 80s when I was in high school, Truckee wasn't like this. So, good job. So I just, I've sat in your seats before, I know exactly what you're faced with this evening with the decision that you need to make. I want to say to the neighbors, I've also sat in their seats, having lived in Grass Valley for many years, very close to one of the homeless facilities that was at the time in the city limits of Grass Valley. So I completely understand where they're coming from and where some of their angst and fears might be, but I'm here to say that a lot of those fears are really, in many respects, unfounded once you have a great plan like this and you get into the nuts and bolts of actually providing this service for people in your community. And I will say, when I was on the city council, I never envisioned myself sitting on the Board of Supervisors. I spent many hours on the phone over the years with county staff, especially with Phoebe and with Ryan, complaining and arguing with them about certain things. And every single time that we ever had any issues with these, with some of the various projects that we have in the city of Grass Valley, the county was phenomenal in dealing with them. They probably were looking at me going, oh my God, she's going to be a supervisor now, what are we going to do? But I'm just here to say that we have amazing staff at the county and any fears and any issues you have will be dealt with quickly and efficiently and you have a group of people who really care about how certain facilities will fit in to the character of your town. Just for context, in Grass Valley, I have a 60-bed homeless shelter in my district. I have the new navigation center that the county just opened a couple of weeks ago in my district. I have 1,100 subsidized housing units within my district. I have all of the behavioral health and social services offices for the county in my district. So I have spent a lot of time working on these issues and I will tell you from personal experience, it has worked out very well. Your law enforcement here is phenomenal and I'm going to guess that you have spent some significant time speaking with the city of Grass Valley's police chief and the city of Nevada City and they hopefully would alleviate some of the fears as far as law enforcement and crimes and things that might occur. So I'm going to stop now because that is my time. Happy to answer any questions that any of you might have offline about what you're looking at tonight, but I would really encourage you to seriously look at approving this proposal that you have in front of you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor.
Good evening, Board members and council members. My name is Allison Schwedner and this evening I'm representing Placer County Health and Human Services as the Eastern Placer County Health and Human Services Liaison. And I am just here to share that Placer County Health and Human Services, and related to your earlier question, is currently reviewing and considering the funding request. The funding request just came through last week and so it is currently moving through review and evaluation with policymakers and that just takes a little bit of time. But with that said, Placer is working to move as quickly as possible to review the request. And then I also just wanted to share that Placer really recognizes the uniqueness of this request and that homelessness is certainly a regional and a community-wide challenge and issue that requires a community-wide and regional solution. And we all know that people in the Tahoe-Trockee area move very fluidly across county lines and work in one county and perhaps live in the other and our unhoused neighbors and residents are no exception to that. And so really, over time, our most successful solutions to support our unhoused individuals have really come from leadership in this room, from leadership that's not in this room and collaborative efforts. And I know we've already talked about Brown Bear Studios, but we are on the cusp of celebrating one year of the opening of Brown Bear Studios. And so Placer County was able to leverage Home Key funding as well as other grant dollars and invested $1.5 million to renovate the Seven Pines Motel in Kings Beach and open 14 units of permanent supportive housing. And I was just there last week and if you haven't been there, it's pretty remarkable. And the folks that are living there are previously homeless individuals and now have a roof over their heads and access to resources and stability. And so I really commend that model and working together to address this challenge. And then I will just say in closing, thank you for your time and also thank you to the THAC members for really working together very, very rapidly to come up with a solution that can really that can really support our residents this winter. So, thank you very much.
Thank you Ms. Schredner.
Hi, my name is Julie Arsenal. I live in the Coldstream neighborhood. Supervisor Bullock, you might want to write that down. It's called Coldstream. This morning at the county meeting, Shawna stated that the community engagement regarding this site started 11 days ago on October 17th. This timeline, as well as several of the comments that were made here this evening, make me think that the considerations of our neighborhood are an afterthought in this decision-making and planning process. Our neighborhood already sees impacts from homeless people and I'm worried that these impacts are going to be exacerbated, not alleviated, by this shelter. I live extremely close to this building. Literally less than the width of this room is the distance between my house and the shelter building. So the impacts here are very real for me. And I will say, I do generally support the model. I think Volunteers of America is great, but I am looking for a few specific things. I do believe that funding should be contingent on a specific Good Neighbor policy, not just the generalities that we have now. And it needs to be, the Good Neighbor policy needs to be expansive enough to drive real positive improvement in our neighborhood and not just localized directly in the immediate area of the building. I want the success metrics to include direct neighborhood impacts for us. So Mayor, you mentioned three categories of metrics for success criteria: ER, police, and housing outcomes. You did not mention anything about impacts for our neighborhood. I would like to see that change. So I would like to see that a meeting be set between town representatives, Volunteers of America, and our Coldstream HOA to work together on a mitigation plan that will help us move forward here. And to be specific about some of the impacts that I'm worried about, where is the smoking zone going to be? When people are smoking, will I be getting cigarette smoke in my windows when they're open in the summer? Like what will be done to make sure there's no public outdoor drug use or alcohol consumption in our neighborhood? We already have people sleeping at the Tartt bus stop, in the Chevron parking lot, at the end of the road, at the end of Coldstream Road, on doorsteps of houses within our neighborhood. Could the opening of this shelter be linked to ways to reduce that for us? What happens for overflow, for people that show up at the center but can't get a bed? Or people that might be using just the day services, right? Where do those people go? Where's parking going to be handled? And how are all, like where are cars going to go, for people that have cars? Congregation and noise in the area, like these are the specific impacts I'm concerned about. I do believe there's a potential mitigation plan, but we need to be engaged in that and it needs to be like a top priority, not just an afterthought. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Martina Caldui. I'm a Coldstream homeowner as well. And I really appreciate the energy in this room, the passion from every side. Everybody's positive, everybody is polite. And we do believe that this, I speak for myself, that this is a great opportunity, but I'm not sure that the location is the right place. Number one, I think some of the questions about capacity and overflow have not been addressed. So I'm concerned that day services are provided for people that are not sleeping in the center. So where are they going to go at night? In our neighborhood, they're going to sleep on our doorsteps, right? So that's a concern. We already have that. We have 48 units of workforce housing. So, you know, I wish I had a map, but anyway, so we have the workforce housing, we have the bus stop, and then we have the shelter. So I think it has been the workforce housing and the current homeless people gather there. They loiter, they have dogs, there's, you know, dog poop, it's not being picked up. So there's a lot of, there's broken glass bottles, we have neighborhoods, kids in the neighborhood, so I'm really concerned about that. So what is the overflow? Where are they going to go? I did some research. I think there's between 50 and 78 homeless people in Truckee. So this supports, I think, 16 beds. So people are going to maybe use the day services, but they're not going to be able to spend the night there. So where are they going to go? Pets, you know, homeless people have pets. How are pets being addressed? What is the policy? I have not heard anything yet. So furthermore, also, I don't think it's a good place for homeless people because it's right next to the freeway. Have you ever been there in the wintertime, when the trucks stop right next to the building? It's noisy, it's loud, the trucks use the circle to turn around. It's not a good environment. I mean, we hear it at night, you know, in our community, so that place is even closer to the freeway. So I would be concerned about, you know, the homeless people getting a good night rest. So, safety near the school bus stops. So these are open questions that I have that haven't really been addressed, so I really like to get some good answers. So the homeless people gather at the bus stop, the kids get off the school bus right across the street. So that is a concern. It's an exposure, right? So how is that going to be addressed? And my biggest point is, everything that is being measured inside the center is not being measured outside the center. Like Julie said, I'd like to see metrics. What are the metrics for our community? You know, how many people are sleeping? Who's measuring those measures? That's my big question. Who's going to address the, how many people sleep on our doorsteps? Anyway, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Good evening, Town Council, Hospital Board. My name is Kathy Foley and today I'm here as a community advocate and a board member for Fellowship of Compassion. I've lived in Truckee for 33 years. In the last 15, I volunteered and worked to provide care and connection for our unhoused neighbors, most recently serving nine years as the leader of the Emergency Warming Center and North Tahoe-Truckee Homeless Services. During those years, I've shared countless meals, discussions, nights, and holidays with our unhoused neighbors. I've learned firsthand that the majority of our guests are people who live in this community or have deep ties to this community. I've witnessed over and over the transformation that happens when people are given access to the basics we all need: a place to sleep, a warm meal, a bathroom, a locker to keep your stuff, a place to do laundry, and most important, a place that you belong and are welcome. When provided this space, at the most basic level, these humans don't die outside in our community. They spend less time at the ER and there's less interactions with our law enforcement. On a deeper level, they rediscover hope, dignity, and the belief that change is possible and their lives are valuable. Homelessness is a complex challenge, as we've all talked, and I'm grateful for everybody through the T-HAC and all of you tonight for being here to really look at solutions. This one-year Navigation Center is the first tangible step towards a consistent, professional, year-round solution and is one that was put together through this plan that's supported by the town, county, and hospital. Through Fellowship of Compassion, I'm helping lead the community fundraising effort for this project. We've submitted a grant request to a local foundation for $70,000. We've received pledges of $30,000 from some of our members and just yesterday received a $3,000 donation from someone who received Shawna's emails on the T-HAC email list. It's a mother and her children who just wanted to start off this and help their neighbors. The initial community contributions show how much that our community cares and wants to see efforts over the last nine years of the piecemeal projects transform into something predictable, sustainable, that really support our vulnerable community members. I believe that when residents and longtime foundation and community members see that the town and the hospital and the county are making this project a priority, that they will follow in those steps. I realize there are lots of questions to be answered and everyone deserves all those answers and much more discussion, but today I do respectfully urge you to vote yes and allow this project to move forward. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Reverend Claire Novak. I'm a T-HAC member representing United for Action, which is a North Tahoe-Truckee coalition of faith-based organizations and community activists. UFA's focus is on our neighbors' basic needs: shelter, food, clothing, health. And for the past 10 years, our key concern has been homelessness and housing. And I'm here to remind you of the depth of community backing for our unhoused neighbors. 10 years ago, to the very day, I was in the basement of Church of the Mountains in Truckee for a neighbor meeting to discuss a proposed pilot project for a weather-triggered emergency warming center. This was a grassroots effort built on best practices and hope. We listened to housed and unhoused neighbors, we researched operations, we adapted them to our unique region. We collaborated, raised money, volunteered, so that we could end deaths from weather exposure and neglect. So here we are again, 10 years later, for another collaborative pilot, a year-round 24/7 Navigation Center. We're still here with the same hope and humanity, but with greater experience and tools and allies. And I especially want to lift up T-HAC's Regional Homeless Action Plan. This plan is local wisdom from locals, grounded in best practices and professional expertise, but suited to Tahoe-Truckee realities and resources. So let's start to carry forward this sound action plan. We know the success of North Tahoe-Truckee Homeless Services that grew out of our grassroots efforts and we know that we have committed, concerned community members who will give their know-how, their dollars, their time to make the Navigation Center succeed. They will approve the funds that you allocate for this center and they'll raise more money. And I'll be here with the more than 100 members of UFA who signed our letter of support to gather more allies. Together, we'll make the Navigation Center a life-changing space for those still out in the cold and still among us. Now, I've been to many neighbor meetings on homelessness over this past 10 years and never once did I hear anyone say that we don't care about our unhoused neighbors. Never once did I hear that they don't or shouldn't exist among us. The questions have always been about the how. How can we make an effective difference? And now we have a very good how in front of us. So please fund this Navigation Center, please back it, and this community will also. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Novak.
Chris Terrell. As a full-time resident at Coldstream, 250 feet from the planned Navigation Center, I'm delighted to see the town and county supporting one piece of the puzzle to solve homelessness and the delivery of services to a population at risk in our community. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I want to express my strong support for establishing a homeless navigation center here in our community. We all know that homelessness is not just a statistic, it's people. It's veterans, seniors, families, and individuals who for many reasons have fallen on hard times. A navigation center is not a permanent shelter, it's a place designed to help people stabilize their lives, to connect with them with housing, healthcare, counseling, and job resources. It offers dignity and direction, not dependency. When we talk about helping the homeless, what we're really talking about is helping our entire community. A well-managed navigation center reduces street homelessness, improves public safety, and ensures that people aren't left suffering in doorways, parks, or underpasses. Communities that have embraced this model have seen only cleaner, safer neighborhoods, but also real success stories, people moving from crisis to stability. That said, I also recognize the concerns that some of my neighbors may have. Change can bring uncertainty and it's important we approach this with transparency and shared responsibility. That's why community engagement must be built into the process from day one. We should create clear communication channels, a neighborhood advisory group, regular updates, and a responsive hotline, so that if any issues arise, they're addressed quickly and collaboratively. Let's set clear rules for safety, cleanliness, and conduct and ensure that both staff and local residents have a voice in how the center operates. This can't be an us-versus-them situation. It must be us together, working to ensure that compassion and accountability go hand-in-hand. By supporting this Navigation Center, we are saying that we value both the well-being of our unhoused neighbors and the strength of our community as a whole. We're saying we'd rather be a part of a solution than part of the problem. Let's lead with empathy, plan with care, and show that our community can be both kind and proactive. It's the Truckee Way. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm J.D. Most of you know me. I'll just save it at that. Okay, the Truckee Way. This is what we've been asking for from the very beginning, instead of a fast, quick approach to single-family residential neighborhoods. Councilmember Paul Avian, answer possibly to your question. I'm familiar with the property. It's already permitted on the east end for a 7,000-square-foot, three-story residential unit. So if this program is as successful as it could be and we're looking for places to move those people into the next housing, if it is, by the grace of God, can we build that? You know, Councilmember Henderson, you showed me the light of the Dream Center in LA. That is the model in my mind, which takes you from the street to a skill to vocational training and puts you back into community to be a proper member of community and work out. You asked what does success look like? This is tough. It's me. In the 80s, I told you, if you weren't here during, you know my story. It's me. I'm what success looks like. I was one of them. In the 80s, it was raw, it was ugly. Man, Travis, him and I have a mutual person that showed me compassion and empathy in the 80s. His Judge Lou Carnahan, he knew the way and he's built many programs. Travis is aligned with him. Talked to him about that. So I wanted to do that and let you know that before I give you this statement. Lastly, I've toured South Lake, I've toured Brown Bear, and I went and toured the site today again during the meetings. The gate was unlocked and I went and took full walk through the property and I have some suggestions again for that. But I wanted to tour that because I was you before I give this statement. And so, as my statement goes, I'm here to give my support for the proposed one-year Navigation Center pilot and to thank the county, town, hospital, district, and Homeless Action Coalition for listening to the concerns of the community with previous projects. I recommended this location on Deerfield Drive to the county in March of this year and I'm pleased to see that the county is moving forward. This building meets the immediate needs of the community and has room for scalable growth for the future. It also allows for privacy for the people who utilize these services. I appreciate the steps T-HAC has taken to listen to concerns of the community at large and their efforts to move the Navigation Center project along in preparation for the coming winter. Lastly, the last two fires, especially the last one on Donner Pass Road, we don't have the evidence because it was washed out by 3,500 gallons of water. We kind of have an idea how that started.
Thank you J.D.
Okay, good evening, Town Council and Board of Directors. Thank you so much for coming together today. This is maybe a model for our friends in DC and coming together and getting work done. Should be proud of Truckee, North Lake Tahoe. My name is Paul Bancroft. I'm the Executive Director of Sierra Community House and I'm also a member, a proud member of T-HAC. I'm here speaking in favor of the pilot project in front of you and encourage all of you to vote in favor as well. I believe this is an investment in a foundation for critical services in our community that we know are needed. So at Sierra Community House, we provide direct rental assistance to hundreds of people annually, thousands of people really in the community. I review every application before signing a check and the majority of the applicants are living precariously, economically speaking, and many are on the verge of homelessness just based on their economic situations. They share that they are choosing between paying rent or a utility bill, paying a utility bill versus paying for food, or choosing between rent or paying for medical support for a loved one. And so one decision might put them out on the street. In our application, we ask, if you do not receive this funding, would you, A, borrow money, B, leave the area, risk homelessness, or other resources? The two responses that are most common are leave the area or risk homelessness or being unsheltered. And so, so much of the work we do at Sierra Community House is in homelessness prevention. Knowing that this resource would exist kind of behind us in our prevention efforts and for those who happen to fall through the cracks or do become unhoused would be absolutely critical in the services we provide and to re-engaging those folks in services. I loved hearing about VOA today. I'm really excited to partner with them. I think we would provide really complimentary supportive services to one another. A lot of homeless folks come to us for services and when they're only looking for a place that's safe for the night, it's nearly impossible to engage in other services because that's the focus. So if we can get folks into longer-term, safe shelter, then we can... folks into longer-term, safe shelter, then we know that we can engage with them and get them back on track and help them in moving forward in their lives. So I'm really excited to partner with VOA. Okay. So while this partner, this project is a pilot, and it comes with a price tag, it is worth every dollar for the safety, help, and hope for each individual impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bancroft.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Gladman. I live in Truckee. I've been a physician at Tahoe Forest for the last 10 years, and I've been Medical Director and the Chair of Emergency Medicine for the district for the last five years. I'm very happy to be here to support a resolution to create the navigation center and a permanent shelter here in Truckee. As in all communities, the emergency department is the critical and final safety net for community members experiencing homelessness. All right. Our nurses and our doctors in the ER were very proud to serve the clinical needs of our homeless population here, and we take that job very seriously. Treating and supporting each patient's medical needs, which typically combine physical, psychologic, and social determinants every time, it is a complex and demanding process. Our department has developed robust resources to provide that care and to abide by state mandates requiring provision of adequate medical and mental health screening, as well as access to meals, medications, vaccinations, weather-appropriate clothing, and a safe discharge plan. A safe discharge plan has two crucial components, an appropriate destination and accessible means of transport to access that destination. In our ED currently, we have neither, leaving the only option as a prolonged stay in the ED with eventual discharge to their previous situation. This scenario creates a high recidivism rate, which diminishes treatment outcomes and stretches our resources to the breaking point. I understand that, especially in winter, such resources are rare in any community like ours. Access to a permanent, professional, and safe shelter with after-care resources to advance each patient's healing journey would be an incredible investment for our community. The ED staff is looking forward to offering this service. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gladman.
Hello again. Katie Lamb, Emergency Department Manager at Tahoe Forest Hospital. I've been in that position for the last five years. I've been a resident of Truckee for 30 years. I'm here in support of the navigation center. It's an, I'll just start by saying, it's an interesting job operating in one of the only places in town that has light, heat, and open doors after midnight. As Chief Renfro probably can agree with me, we find ourselves in the middle of situations that stretch the imagination and issues that not many members of our community see. People come to us with medical emergencies, but they also come to us when they are cold, or they're scared, or they don't have power in their house. EMS is tasked with 911 calls for these patients for laying in the street, sleeping in inappropriate places, and there is only one place in town that they can come. The ED truly feels the impacts of vulnerable populations. They come to us looking for resources, help, and a warm place at night. Our staff are community members, who always go above and beyond to help their neighbors. The state of California also mandates some responsibilities for us, one of which is a safe discharge plan that Dr. Gladman just spoke to. Not having a safe discharge plan for unhoused patients puts the emergency department in a difficult moral and legal predicament. We end up housing many of these people overnight, offering them food and a warm place to stay until morning. This creates a burden on our resources. The ED has legal ratios of nurses who need to be ready to care for critical patients. Having extra patients in the department takes away from the care of others in the community. Taking up ER beds means that there are less beds available when sick community members show up, or there's a critical motor vehicle accident on the highway. In the past, the warming shelter overnight gave us a place to be able to send people. Our staff knew that once patients left our door, they would be safe overnight. However, in the morning, when it closed, and they were asked to leave, many came back to the hospital looking for help. The 24/7 component of this navigation center is a game changer for the hospital as well. Having a safe place to send patients on cold nights is a necessity for our town. It will make a real positive impact on our health system, as well as the patients in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb.
Good evening. My name is Trent Faust. I am the Director of Nursing for Tahoe Forest Hospital. As you mentioned, or as we just heard Katie and Dr. Gladman talk about the effects of the emergency department, I'd like to take it one step further and as a hospital in its entirety. Thank you for the opportunity to speak for a moment. Every day, we admit patients whose medical needs are only part of their story. For individuals experiencing homelessness, a hospital stay often represents the first stable roof, bed, and hot meal they've had in weeks. Yet, when it's time for discharge, the question becomes, where do they go? When a patient without stable housing is admitted, our case managers begin not just a clinical journey, but a social journey, navigating a complex web of barriers that extend far beyond the hospital walls. Many of these patients have no safe place to go, no transportation, and no access to follow-up care or medications. Discharge planning, which should be a bridge to recovery, often becomes a search for shelter and social services, not treatment for, not for treatment continuity. We do often have some unhoused patients who are diligent in follow-up, who know their medical conditions, and who seek out care, but that is not the norm. Patients leave the community, and they leave their providers. This lack of availability of discharge options creates a ripple effect. Patients remain in beds longer than medically necessary while waiting for placement, which can be costly and unsustainable. In some cases, patients are discharged back to the streets, where the likelihood of readmission rises dramatically. Studies have shown that they are two to three times more likely to be readmitted within 30 days, often for preventable complications. Discharging post-operative patients with open wounds, with fresh incisions to a campground or to their car in unsanitary conditions does not set them up for success. This isn't just a social issue, it's a hospital operations issue. It's a multi-agency issue with our partners in EMS and law enforcement, and prolonged lengths of stay searching for placement delays care for others. Emergency departments become the holding areas, as they are the inherent backup to space limitations for the inpatient units, and staff, as Katie said, have faced moral distress as they watch patients recover clinically, only to discharge them to instability. Patients remain in the hospital for that recovery. We've had patients stay upwards of six weeks because we don't feel safe sending them home for their treatments post-operatively for either infections or lack of availability for safe discharge. Effective discharge planning for our most vulnerable patients reduces readmissions, improves outcomes, and ultimately uses hospital resources effectively and resources of our multi-agency or community. It often opens up beds for incoming patients while upholding the dignity and humanity for the patients we serve. Having a permanent shelter in Truckee will serve our community in its entirety, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Faust.
Hello. My name is Ruth Cross. I have lived here since 1972, and I want to say I knew our first, the first homeless people I knew were, they lived in Alpine, the Alpine Riverside Hotel, and I can remember one of their names, but not the other. Anyway, I just wanted to say that I started about eight, maybe nine years ago with Kathy Foley, and helped to develop and, you know, work in the homeless shelter. And I got to learn and understand what homelessness really is. And it was a surprise to me, I have to say, you know? And I thought maybe a good way to explain it would be to talk to one, to tell you about one of the homeless people, and that's Kevin. And Josh knows Kevin really well, and he is just a great person to work with. And Kevin is about 40, and he lived in Incline, and he was born and raised here. He lived in Incline. His mother died, and his father married somebody in Florida, so he was left all alone. And he ended up, I don't know what happened between then and when we saw him, but he came in, he couldn't walk, he couldn't, he had not slept for days because he was sleeping outside. And when you're outside, you can't sleep, because there's bears, and there's coyotes, and there's people, and, you know, there's just no place to really sleep. And he got, he just got really stressed, and when he came to us, he was just a panic, a mess. And so, with, working with Josh and some other people, he got him to open up, and he came around, and he actually wanted to work. So I went over to hospice, I got clothes for him, and he now is, he works full-time, and he's doing a great job. And I think that just a little bit of care sometimes can go a long way. And I also think that, you know, we have fears. We all have fears, you know? Oh, you know, I might, when I first started, I was like, oh my God, you know, I have to go into this place with all these homeless people, what's going to happen? And, you know, you're, you just develop all these things in your mind, so I said, I'm going to take my dog Lucy. And so, she walked in with me, and she licked everybody, and pretty soon, they were all like, oh, you know, everything was great. And I just had to yell at them for feeding her too much. So, I think that sometimes, I just want to, like, I guess what I really like to do is encourage you to really meet the people and understand them and know what they're like, and just welcome them into your hearts. And the other thing, I just want to say one more thing. I am, I'm really begging you to not focus on why this can't happen, but what you can do to make it happen.
Thank you, Ruth.
Robin Terrell, Coldstream homeowner. Councilmembers, hospital board, any of you could become homeless one day. It happens for all kinds of different reasons, and homelessness is not just miserable, it's dangerous. My wife and I, late last week, came across a man, a homeless man, in rather bad shape, lying unconscious in the road, in Coldstream Road. We called the emergency services, and they came very promptly, and they dealt with him. But can you imagine if that had not been, we hadn't been there, we weren't around to do it? So, an affluent community like Truckee, that sort of thing should never happen. And so, I implore you, please approve this project because we need it.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Okay, I don't see anyone approaching the podium, which means we can come back with any follow-up questions by council. We'll start with Councilmember Paul Avian. None?
No further questions.
Director Brown?
I have no questions.
Councilmember Henderson?
Chief, current unhoused population count and how that typically fluctuates between summer and winter?
It's a good question. So, the folks that we deal with on a, on a regular basis, I would put that number of around eight to 10. But I know that there's other folks that are in the room that have the in-depth data of folks that are receiving services that are likely unhoused, but those are the folks that we, as a police department, don't necessarily come across on a daily basis.
Can you pull up a map of the, of where the building is? I can't remember if we had an overhead map or just a map from an angle. Okay, so looking at that map, it looks to me like the building faces the north, towards the Chevron Station, and, yeah, the Chevron Station, is that correct?
Correct.
And that's where, that's where the entrance is?
That's correct.
And there's a fence behind the building, between the building and the condominiums?
Yes.
And there's no entrance or access on the backside, on the condominium side?
I believe I heard that there was a gate.
There was a gate?
There is a gate.
Okay. And that gate could be locked?
Yes.
Okay. And then, the parking is on the north side as well?
Yes, it looks like the north and the east.
Okay, so all the access is on the north side, away from the condominium?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, my next question has to do with the neighbors being involved in how to protect themselves and the tenants there. I thought I heard Travis say there's their intent to meet at least once a month with the, with the neighbors, be available once a month. And I understand the T-HAC meeting will be open to the public at least once a month.
Yeah, and if I can make a recommendation with that, as far as engaging with not only the, the community members that are homeowners that live in that area, but also the businesses that are in the area, I think it's important for the T-HAC group to engage with them probably more consistently than a monthly basis, especially if this gets approved and when it becomes occupied, to, to engage with them and to, to meet with them and to talk about it. Because, you know, the stuff that they're talking about as far as mitigation plans, the drug and smoking, the parking, the noise, trash and glass, and the safety at the bus stop, those are real important things that we, as a community, and we, as a T-HAC group, I think, you know, from me working in this profession in this town for the last 22 years, if there's, if there's a community that can do it, it's Truckee. And, and I think we have the support and the, and the community buy-in to do that. So, that's what I would recommend.
Okay. Okay. One of the commenters correctly pointed out that I didn't say essentially neighborhood satisfaction would be one measure of success. Now, there is a good neighborhood policy, which is directed at protecting the neighborhood. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. That's, that would be through VOA, and we would work with VOA to, to set those metrics of what success looks like, the entire T-HAC group, and by all means, continue to invite the community to attend those meetings and, and hear their input.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions. Director Alice Wong?
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Romack?
I did, you know, there were community member comments around, there's currently people sleeping at bus shelters or non-doorsteps, and I think it was said already, but can you confirm, currently, when there's no other space, the police, yes, you can make them get off private property, but you can't really make them go anywhere else? So if there is a shelter that would give an opportunity to move people out of bus stations?
Yes, that's, that's right. We would be able to direct them to, to the shelter.
Okay.
And off of public property.
Thank you.
Director Chamberlain?
No further questions.
Vice Mayor Klosdod?
No, thank you very much, Councilmember Romack and Mayor, for your questions and clarifications. That satisfied my requests.
Okay. And Chair McGary?
No further questions.
Okay. Okay, with no further questions, that means we can go into a joint deliberation. As I mentioned, we have four categories. First one is site selection, the next one is zoning, the next one is money, and the final one is future direction. That's the general progression of discussion, but feel free to just hit on, on what you'd like to discuss most, and where your concerns are. And most, again, if you don't mind, start at the far left with Councilmember Paul Avian.
Thank you. Thank you to the community, thanks to fellow hospital board members and staff, and the T-HAC, the Homeless Advisory Committee, and really, a lot of the work that it's taken to get here today. This is, this is pretty fast. This is impressive local governance, and I think just in general, extremely successful of how much action and how much deliberation and thought has gone on for the last year-plus, probably, since, since we knew there wasn't going to be a warming shelter last winter. I can get to approval of all of the things that we are being asked to approve. As many of you know, my business, both of my businesses are in popular areas of town that experience unhoused populations pretty much on the daily basis. We have numerous Uh, we have numerous interactions with our local law enforcement, we have numerous interactions with the unhoused folks, um, and it's a challenge that this comp, that this community has to tackle. And we cannot continue pushing things off every single time we find a location or every, every time we have an opportunity. I do believe this is a trial opportunity. It's a one-year lease. This is, we're not committing to anything for 20 years by any stretch of the imagination. We're here to solve problems, um, and we're here to, to sort of just manage the, the efficiencies of our, of our entities and our organizations. And I think that's partially what I really appreciate, appreciate about this joint meeting. I think it's fascinating to hear, um, how these impacts are, are really intertwined in so much of what we all do. So, um, I can get behind all of this. Is it ideal for everybody? Absolutely not. Is it a compromise? Absolutely. Um, you know, we've talked about Model A and B. I think staff has brought us these different models and different updates 12 different times and, uh, I don't even remember what Model A and B were anymore, but I'm really happy that what we have in front of us is really meant to satisfy so many different issues that we as a community are facing. I also really think it's important to highlight this as a stepping stone into the supportive housing that is coming online. I think that's incredibly important. We've had, um, some unfortunate circumstances around some of the other types of, um, truly affordable housing in this community and I, I'm very hopeful that we are learning from, from that history and, and this is sort of yet another positive step in that direction. I'd like to offer, and I appreciate you letting me go first because I am going to offer a slight amendment to, can you go to the second page, chief or whoever? So, the amendment I would like to offer, no, no, back one, I know, it's a little sticky there on the, uh, on the uptake, is gonna be the, the expediting of permits. And that's primarily due to the timing of all of this. So, um, I have some personal experience here and, and the reason why I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna be really brief in explaining why. What I would like to add to this is if we need to expedite anything, that we authorize town staff with up to $20,000 in third-party planning consultant work if needed in order to continue the processing of all permits that are currently in the system at the rate that they are expecting. And that's really important to me for one very specific reason. Um, the, the time that this is going to be happening is going to be coinciding with our holiday period, which is a very high business activity period in our community. And the difference between one week of a permit being approved to four weeks of being a permit approved, let's say you're expecting your permit to be ready to go on November 20th, right before Thanksgiving, and this is specifically for tenant improvement permits, specifically, sorry, let me take that back one step, specifically for tenant improvement permits, as far as other land use permits are concerned, I'm okay with however we wanna expedite that and I trust staff to do that. This is for tenant improvement permits for businesses in our community who are trying to get open and are up against a clock primarily for the holiday season and potentially for their rent start date. So the way tenant improvements work is generally the tenant is responsible for said improvements and you're up against a clock until you actually can put a dollar in your register or whatever it is you're doing to collect money, you have to be able to get open. If this was happening in any other time of year, I would sort of be less, um, less strong-willed on this one, but because it's this time of year and weeks cost a huge amount of expense in our business community, it is incumbent for us to do everything we can to get those businesses open in the fashion that they had been expecting when their permits were applied for. And that's gonna be my amendment, is $20,000 to authorize town staff to do what they need to do for tenant improvement allowances. Otherwise, I'm in support of all the bullets in front of us. Thank you. And thank you to everyone for all your work on this.
Before we go to council member Henderson, this is pretty much a, a town question, so I'm gonna go ahead and skip you, Director Brown. The, uh, this never came up during council questioning of staff and so I'm gonna briefly reopen, um, the council questions in order to give staff an opportunity to address this $20,000 reauthorization. I believe it would be discretion, discretionary for the staff to hire third-party operator to help with tenant improvement permits.
Yes, I understand that council member Paul Ovee's desire is to ensure that any other party who's already in the system, uh, trying to, uh, get a tenant improvement permit is not harmed by expediting this permit for this, uh, project. And I think with the, I'll ask Danielle to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think if council authorizes up to an additional $20,000, it could be used most likely for third-party plan check services, uh, should that be needed, that, uh, we can accomplish that. And Danielle, if you disagree?
Um, yeah, you could authorize that. Um, I'm not sure it's gonna be necessary because we already in our budget have about $150,000 set aside for our planner view. And when someone comes in and we, you know, decide we have too much workload and we send it to a third-party, we're still collecting a portion of that, um, within the building department and then the rest of it's going to pay a third-party. So that's all part of the budget, um, but if you feel like that's something that would help ensure that things all are processed consistently?
I don't care where the funds come from, you can use whatever funds you want. I just wanna ensure that all permits are processed in an equal and timely fashion. Um, and I only support expediting if there is a way to expedite that doesn't harm existing permits in the process. And I only bring that up because it was very clear in our question and answer prior to the meeting that should something be expedited, something else falls off the plate. We, we get told that every single council meeting.
Yeah.
So I'm trying to say, I don't want anything to fall off the plate. I want all permits processed in a timely manner. Staff, do whatever you have to do to get that done.
Yep, yep, that works. And I think, um, I, I think based on Danielle's comments, the, the budget amendment, additional budget authority is probably not needed, uh, but I think as it relates to the direction on, uh, expediting the tenant improvement processing, it would, you could add language in that to say expedite tenant improvement processing, uh, so as not, it, but in a manner that will not slow down TI processing for existing projects.
Great, noted. That is my recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, does the clerk have that recommendation if we come back to it? Okay, Sarah? All right, thank you. And with that, council member Paul Ovee, you're fine with everything else in terms of moving forward?
I am and I'm ready to move forward.
Okay, council member Henderson?
Okay, thank you very much. Um, thank you to everyone who's still here. It's 8:30 at night. This is not our latest by far, but, um, I know you've been here for several hours. I wanna start just by addressing some of the concerns of some of the neighbors who have spoken, um, because you deserve a real answer and I understand the worry. Nobody wants their neighborhood to change in a way that feels unsafe or that feels uncertain. And that said, I want us to reframe a little bit on what we're actually deciding tonight. This is really about creating well-designed solutions that create value for everyone, that create value for everyone in this room, that create value for everyone who lives in this beautiful community of ours. This is about infrastructure. The proposed navigation center and shelter is infrastructure for human capital. It isn't just a shelter, it's a talent recovery center. Studies show that every dollar invested in supportive housing generates one and a half to $2 in economic return through reduced emergency services, reduced healthcare costs, and increased workforce participation. To me, this is really about multiplying resources by removing the barriers that keep people from contributing. There is a lot of data on safety and that data is pretty clear. Professionally managed shelters with services reduce crime in surrounding areas. And why is that? Well, because they move people from dispersed, unmonitored, often unsafe encampments into structured environments with case management, with mental health support and pathways to stability. Security is about creating systems that keep all of us safe and that help all of us to thrive. And then there's a bigger question here. What kind of community are we building? What kind of community do we want to build? Communities are judged by how they treat their most vulnerable members. Beyond just morality, it's also competitive advantage. Cities thrive, they attract talent and investment when they demonstrate that they can handle complexity with confidence and compassion. And lastly, I know we've heard, "Not in my backyard," both with this site and prior sites. But here's the question, whose backyard? These are our neighbors, maybe their former coworkers, veterans who have served us in our country, friends or even family members who have fallen on hard times. They're already here. The question isn't whether they exist in our community, it's whether we help them stabilize or continue a cycle through our emergency room and our police department at a significantly higher societal cost. Expanding the circle of us doesn't diminish those inside it, it strengthens our entire community fabric. I'm ready to commit to a 12-month pilot at 12-315 Deerfield Drive with the following: a robust evaluation with transparent metrics, opportunities for ongoing community engagement, the collaborative development and implementation of a good neighbor policy, which should include core elements like respect for the neighborhood, noise control, parking regulations, and communication channels to ensure open communication between neighbors and the parties involved. I'm ready to commit the requested funding, um, not to exceed $360,000, along with the expedited planning process, including council member Paul Ovee's amendment to the language on that, except T-HAC's recommendation for Nevada County to exercise superior jurisdiction and waive the 60-day notification period. And I'll just say that if and as concerns materialize, we'll, we'll adjust. Evidence from other facilities shows that these types of facilities become quiet, stabilizing community assets. So we have a choice tonight. We can govern from a place of fear of what we might lose or from confidence in what we can all build together. This shelter is infrastructure for human potential, it's infrastructure for community potential, it's infrastructure for the potential for what we can all do here in Truckee when we work together and when we collaborate. So to me, the question isn't whether we can afford it, it's whether we can afford not to. I'm fully in support of moving forward tonight.
I generally followed what you said and I think I generally agree. I'm trying to reduce it down to writing what we're actually adopting. When we see something on the screen, I heard you say you wanna ensure continued neighborhood involvement to ensure that, um, um, neighborhood success is one of the success elements. I, I don't know quite the words, but I, I need some language here because it, it sounds like you're not satisfied with the recommendations as written.
No, I think I am. I, I mean, one of them is, you know, direct T-HAC to evaluate the success of the pilot, right? I said specifically a robust evaluation with transparent metrics. That aligns directly with that.
And you're then fine with council member Paul Ovee's amendment?
That is what I said, yes.
Okay. For my part, um, I agree with the other two council members. I'm going to note that Travis Sandifer on behalf of VOA said he wants to meet with neighbors every, uh, month. I endorse that. Also, the T-HAC meets monthly in public meetings. I, uh, endorse that. I think that is embedded in the, uh, six-month evaluation, but it's talking about appearing monthly. I think the only hesitation about a neighborhood advisory group is, uh, the logistics and the efficiency involved in that. And I'm not aware of a neighborhood group existing right now. I'm, I'm aware of individuals who submitted, um, identical, nearly identical comments to the planning commission and, um, I don't even know if they're in an HOA or not, if there's already an existing structure by which to participate. But, um, you can get the sense that, um, the council appreciates protecting the neighborhood. We wanna see that happen and, uh, for now, at least three of us, I think, see that already being included in the recommendations. And, uh, so I'm ready to, um, move ahead with it, approve it with the amendment recommended by council member Paul Ovee as well.
I, I would just add, one of the recommendations is specifically provide direction and approve the proposed 120-day navigation center pilot community engagement and communications plan. That's, that's what we're supporting, right? I think that's what we've said. We support, we're getting into some detail on what exactly that is. We've provided some direction on what that should look like, on the robustness of it, on channels for communication, but I think that aligns pretty directly with that recommendation.
Okay, great, great. Thank, I agree. Okay, council member Romack?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, council member Henderson. I was gonna point out the same thing, that that was part of our requested action. Um, I did, similar to my fellow council members, just wanna thank everybody involved in this process, who's in this room, who served on T-HAC, who is a staff member that has provided support. I think this has been, again, an incredible model for how we can collaborate together. Um, and this history-making, uh, collaborative meeting, I think, again, this is great. We're, we're all one community, so when we can work together and hear the challenges that another special district is facing with the challenges of homelessness on hospital services, that's hugely impactful. So thank you to staff for making this happen tonight and for the hospital board for participating. I just did wanna highlight, again, I think this is great for our community. Um, and then, yeah, I'm fully in support of moving forward. One other thing I wanted to highlight too is I know, chief, you have come to council multiple times and early on in the process, it was Model A, which I know, council member Paul Ovee, you forgot, but that was just the interim beds, which is not what we had initially heard from our community. When, when there was more robust conversation earlier this year, it was really, we want a shelter and we want a navigation center. So again, thank you to everyone involved in T-HAC and VOA for stepping up to really get to what the community was asking for months ago. So again, just credit to everybody who, we thought we could only go one way and we found a way to go the other way that the community was asking for. So just kudos to everyone, um, for making that happen. And then I think, yeah, there's, there's a lot of data to be gathered and a lot of metrics to understand of impacts across a variety of realms and having this one-year pilot will really give us the opportunity to gather that data and see what the impacts are to neighbors, to our hospital, to our, our public safety officers, um, so we can make better decisions moving forward. And then fully in support of, you know, the $360,000 for this one-time, uh, funds, I, I do really wanna put it out there that we need to find a, another sustainable funding source. And I, I heard it from you Supervisor Bullock and I know there's dedication from community members, uh, but knowing that this is probably not something the town can continue to do, I don't know about the hospital district, but ensuring it's not expected that 12 months from now, we're back in this position asking for the same amount of money again, but knowing we can all come together to continue to find solutions. So happy to move forward with all of this. Thank you.
Okay. And then for the council, lastly, but not leastly, uh, Vice Mayor Kluivstod, um, tell us what your thoughts are. And would you mind also commenting specifically on the 120-day navigation center pilot engagement and communication plan? The staff has asked for direction on that and we've received some, partly from council member Henderson and a little bit from me. So it'd be good to have your thoughts on that as well.
Yes, thank you, mayor. And, um, again, I wanna reiterate how grateful I am for everybody's participation in this. This has been a huge learning curve for me. It was at least five or six years ago that I toured the Church of the Mountain site with Kathy and, and Ruth and recognized in that moment instantly how vital of a resource that was and what a huge loss it was to our community when that was no longer available. Um, so this to me is a real dream come true for, um, opportunities. I know it's not ideal for everyone and I wanna also... I know it's not ideal for everyone, and I want to also really thank deeply the people that have communicated to us their concerns. I've emailed with several of you, and I look forward to continuing that conversation as we develop this plan, because this, of course, has to work for you as well. And one thing that I think is really clear from this presentation and from all the work that's been done on the 120-day plan, as well as this entire pilot program, is that we recognize that this is just the beginning of the road to create that stable future that we all are looking for. And that's going to take input from everyone in order to really make it work and make it successful. So, I encourage everybody to keep participating and contributing, and making sure that we're responding to all of those concerns and all the successes as well. With that, I'm in full favor of the recommendations. I actually don't feel the need to make the amendment that was presented by Councilmember Polavy. I feel that town staff has established that we have a well-funded contract availability for doing that additional or that third-party review, and they can access that money as it is, as it currently exists. And I think they understand the urgency that you have expressed here, so I don't feel that is a necessary amendment, but if others are supportive of it, that is not going to deter my support of this program. And I do believe that the amendments, though, that you, Mayor, and Councilmember Henderson talked about for the community engagement piece are beneficial.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, but I need to read all of them, don't I?
Would you like me to?
Bring up Recommendation Slide 1.
I'll bring up Recommendation Slide 1. Do you want me to alter the bullet point?
Yeah, why don't we do that, just for transparency for everyone in the room?
Yeah, it would be the council's preference, but you could, you know, read each one of these, or you could approve the staff recommendation with or without the amendment. I think either way, we've heard the consensus of the council that you don't want to see other tenant improvements delayed through the expedition of this, so whether that's included in the amendment via amendment or through direction, it will happen that way. So...
Okay, so, I don't have to read them all. We'll get out of here a little faster. I move that we approve all of staff recommendations that are presented before us with the language amendment that no other TI applicants are harmed in any way by the expedition of this particular permit.
And we can capture that in the minutes.
Thank you.
I'll second. Okay, let's do a roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Rowmack?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Polavy?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kluftud?
Yes.
And Mayor Zabriski?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Unanimously. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to our Pro-Tam Chair for the Hospital Board, Pro-Tam Chair Wong.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of you who have stayed. I know it's been a long day, and I know some of you have heard some of this information more than once, but again, repetition is a good thing, because it'll engrain it in you. But what we have before us is an important decision to make. It's important to not only those that we're going to serve in the homeless domain, but also our community. Our mission at our hospital is to enhance the health of our community through compassion and excellence, and the unhoused are part of our community. And so, we want to do our share of doing this due diligence is to get this shelter in place. So, I'd like to, I know we haven't, as a board, discussed this as a general topic, but I'd like to open it with a discussion from our board and from our staff in terms of what you've heard today and how it fits into the plan of our organization. So, if I could start with Mary?
Thank you, Alice. I mean, I can only repeat what I said before in terms of the need and the urgency for fulfilling this need at this point in time. I don't have any reservations about this whatsoever. Operationally, I think there are questions that need to be answered, and those will be addressed through Travis and the VOA and the HOA and what have you, but I have no reservations about voting for this authorization.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment about the urgency. Things came aligned very quickly. We had a partnership, the hospital, the town, the county. We had a place that hadn't happened in the past two years. So, again, that feeling of urgency is because now they're aligned, and to make it happen, we've got to make a decision this week. So, then I'm going to turn to...
Alice, if I could just build on that for just a minute. I mean, I think there's so many people in this room who have been working in the background for many years to make this happen, and it's sort of that whole idea that you all have gone slowly in order to now go fast. And I appreciate all that you've done. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Director Chamblin, your comments?
Yeah, well, I'd just like to add something that hasn't been hit upon too hard, the moral imperative for what we're doing, too. I hope a lot of you are thinking of that as you're looking at the practicalities of dealing with the quote "problem." So, yes, I'm in favor of everything that's been discussed tonight, and I'm ready to move forward.
And Chair McGary, can we have any comments from you?
I think from, you know, the direct benefit to the Health District is obvious, especially when we think about the Emergency Department and some of the areas where we face challenges on a regular basis. The moral imperative, the alignment with our mission is 100%, right, in addressing the health of the community every day, right? Not just in times of crisis, but really every day. Our decision tonight is really more a financial one in supporting this, but I do feel compelled to comment, this is an easy decision for me to get to. It's a slightly more challenging decision to get to if it was in my backyard. I know that's been brought up a number of times tonight, so I just want to respect the comments made by those living adjacent to the property. I didn't hear from any of them, "No, don't do it," but do it in a very thoughtful way, do it in a way that is measuring impact. And the response from the town and others has satisfied me that it will be done in that way. So, I am looking forward to vote on it.
Thank you. Traditionally, we ask staff if they have any input. Do we do that tonight?
We don't have any formal input. I think that was in our remarks, but I was actually at the opening, the mayor asked me if I had any comments on this historic occasion. Again, Anna Roth, President and CEO of Tahoe Force Hospital District, and I just wanted to make a comment to my board, the council, and the community here that's gathered here and who have called in. And I also joined this morning the county staff as they discuss the same issue. And I just wanted to say that I have worked in health systems all my life, and I'm actually moved by the conversations tonight, this community and the compassion and the caring and the care, and even for the concerns that were raised tonight were raised in such a thoughtful way. But I'm truly struck, I've actually never encountered, this is historic for me on so many levels, because I've never really watched a deliberation like this, so I'm very proud to be part of this community, and I'm very proud to be part of this organization and to be able to partner with such amazing people across this region. So, thank you so much for giving me just a moment to say that.
So, then, we have a motion for our board?
You have...
Excuse me, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the President and CEO to execute the contract. And I'm not going to go on to...
All the rest of it?
And to support the Navigation Center with an amount of 360, not to exceed $360,000.
All right.
And I'll second that motion. I would love to see our CFO, Crystal Felix, give a thumbs up that she can find the money.
Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Pro-Tam Wong? Okay. Board Member Brown?
Yes.
Director Brown, apologies.
Yes.
Director Chamblin?
Yes.
And Chair McGary?
Yes.
Okay, so that the hospital is...
Passes for zero.
All right.
Anything further from the hospital? Nope.
It's been grand working with you.
This joint session stands adjourned.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Mayor, just a housekeeping item. In our excitement to move to this topic, I think we may not have taken general public comment for items not on the agenda.
I'm going to grade over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, though, for checking.
Let the record reflect that.
Okay, we're adjourned.